So, I mean, I guess just on the frontage, and there's multiple calculations you'd have to try and do. And I think Tom's starting from the position, you know, we didn't try and make conforming lots. So, you know, we didn't, we didn't want it to be that you made more lots out of what was already a conforming lot. But if you did, and you carved out 240 feet of frontage for the existing house, then you'd have to look at what was left over and see if you had the ability to do a large lot frontage reduction. That, that's my thinking on it.
So what you're saying, Paul, just for clarification, is you could get two housing units in there, one being an A and R, and the other being the second would be a large lot?
I'm, I mean, from a frontage standpoint, maybe you could, but I'm not sure that it would make the other calculations because that house is way back and covering a lot of land. I just don't know how you would, I don't know how the lot would set up.
Yeah, I think that's the question is when you carve out, the, the question for the applicant to go back and look at is when you try to carve out your large lot frontage reduction, is the other lot going to remain conforming? If you're gonna, if you're basically carving out a conforming lot and an, an LLFR, that's fine. But if you have to make the first lot non-conforming to conform to the large lot, that's where you're going to run into trouble. Is that kind of a summary, Paul, of what you were saying?
Yeah.
And what Tom was saying?
Yeah, well, I'm, that's what I'm saying. Tom might have a further, you know, concern with making what's a, you know, a conforming lot into a large lot, but, but I, that, you've addressed, you've summarized my question.
But can I just ask a question first is, okay, Tommy, so I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say Westboro Road's a good example. We have frontage lots and a large lot, and we made them put them on separate plans and separate engineering.
Right.
Yep.
Right, and they, and they did do it. I mean, they had, you know, that, that lot was big enough. It had no houses on it, so it was easier to conceptualize. But they, they said, look, this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna carve out a, a lot or two here that are standard, you know, vanilla frontage lots. And we said, okay, do that. And then they were left with what was kind of the classic large lot frontage reduction with, you know, say 100 feet of, of, of frontage and, you know, eight acres. And they said, can we get a lot in here? And, and the answer in that case was yes.
So question, Jack, I mean, I have two questions. Um, one of them is, there are two houses identified here. Are either of those, do you have ownership of either of those or are those other owned by other people?
The two up front on Walnut Street are not mine. Those are owned by other people.
Okay, okay. Um, okay. And the other question I had is when you were talking about, you know, the, on this, you talk about, oh, okay, it's just large lot frontage reduction special permit. You weren't talking about putting two large lots in there, or were you?
Based on what you've said, that doesn't sound very possible because it doesn't sound like I have enough frontage to do that. I have enough land to do it, but probably not enough frontage. And I may also run slightly short on the land component. If it's, you know, six acres per large lot in this district, that would only leave an acre and a half for the remaining home.
Okay. But if you could do, I mean, when you're, we're talking about two large, you know, large lots. If you could fit it in, once you did your final calculations, do a, a conforming lot, and then look at an A and R lot if you had, again, I don't know what the exact numbers are on this. And I also see a book running through it that might complicate things for you, but, I mean, was your end goal two units or was your end goal three units?
Well, I mean, you know, that depends on zoning. I've also had a, a preliminary plan drawn up for a, a four lot subdivision in, inside here, you know, a regular, um, open space subdivision. But, you know, at this point, it's more questions for me, you know, for the planning board. What's, you know, what's feasible, what should I consider? And that's why I asked to go on the agenda tonight to learn more about the large lot provisions.
Yes, Madam Chairperson, if I may, one of the reasons we put that in was to try and slow the growth down in the town and, um, and not devalue the neighborhood as well. We didn't want to put in a lot, like you say, put in three or four large lots or next to each other. That devalues the, the neighborhood who had to qualify with, with the 80,000 and 240. So, um, but a, a small subdivision is, is probably what you'd have to put in to get it anyway. So you, you didn't waste any money with the preliminary on the subdivision because that's one of the things that we, we use to judge whether this is a good idea. Because if you can put in a bunch of houses, but it really looks good with just a couple with your frontage and you think, that's good for the neighborhood. But a small subdivision isn't a bad idea either. We're, we're in a slow growth period for that, that type of housing. So I, I wouldn't be opposed to anything like that.
Okay. All right, I have no further questions.
You're muted.
Okay, is there anybody on this call who had any questions? Anybody who called in? Okay, members of the planning board, no more questions? Okay, then let's move on.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for coming. Um, discussion, 12 Walker Drive, proposed addition. He wants to know if, um, the addition would trigger, I think, site plan approval. So, um, do you wanna, Mike, do you wanna talk?
Yeah, I, um, I, I think Pat Rhodes, I believe, requested this be on for tonight's meeting. Um, I think this is, this should be a fair, I, I think this is fairly simple. I mean, Grace, I believe, um, sent out the plans or the rough sketch that was, um, associated with the building permit on this, which showed a, a fairly large addition. And, and Grace, that, I mean, that was well over 2,000 square feet, I believe, correct? The, um, the addition? Um, so I meant 2,000 feet is obviously a threshold for, um, a site plan review when it, when it comes to commercial use. So, um, I, I'm, I'm pretty confident that this does require site plan approval through the planning board. Um, but Pat Rhodes wanted confirmation from the planning board on that.
That's a trigger, Mike, that's a definite trigger. We should hold a site plan for that.
Absolutely. Grace, uh, and through the chair, Grace, was the, um, was the proponent here to, to discuss any further with the, with the board? And ask any questions?
I'm here.
Jim Mignone, yes.
Yes, I'm here.
So, does anybody have any questions for, for, and you are, um?
Robert Mignone.
Okay. So, Robert, do you wanna say anything about this or?
No, I was just looking to see what I needed to do to get a permit or see what I need, needed to do to get this thing rolling.
Okay. Do the planning board?
Site plan approval.
Yeah, have any, um, you know, advice to give him about what he has to do in next steps, Tommy?
Um, follow the site, there's no special permit in this, right, Mike? Just a site plan?
Yeah, I, I believe this is a straight site plan. Um, uh, I would ask the proponent to just confirm the proposed use. It is gonna remain constant, uh, I'm, I'm assuming for whatever the current use is. Like it's, it's, what is, like, what's the addition for, I, I would ask?
Inside truck parking.
And what is, what is the current business?
We're, we're towing and recovery business. And we want a park.
Yeah, the best thing you can do to prepare for a site plan, number one is your engineering, which looks like you supplied, uh, the use, as Mike was talking, um, any, any parking issues that you, that you may have, your parking layout, and just a, a general goal to make sure that the town, um, folks are happy with it. DPW, please fire, that we can get in there and take care of anything if we need to. The usual stuff, site plan's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, okay. All right.
So, yeah, I mean, work with Mike and, you know, let us know when you're ready and we can get it on the agenda.
Okay.
So. Okay, any other questions?
Feel free to call the office and I'm happy to schedule a sit down to talk, uh, about this with you and Grace, um, going forward.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
So the next item is Mayflower Drive road acceptance, Hartford Highland subdivision. Um, so, uh, Mike, do you wanna give a quick overview of this?
Yeah, um, so this, this, uh, issue is resurfacing, I guess. Um, because I'm, I'm of the understanding that this has come up to the board, I guess, a number of times over the last couple of years. This is my first introduction to this, this particular issue. Um, my understanding is that obviously this is, uh, Mayflower Drive is not an accepted public road. Um, there are, it's a four lot subdivision, all the homes are already constructed. The, um, uh, uh, the, the residents are now running into issues with, um, you know, during certain snow events, they're not getting plowed. Uh, obviously, that's the responsibility of the developer as it's a developer road, not a public road. Um, and then because, uh, because of the snow events, uh, I believe the post office is, is not delivering mail to them. So they're, they're in a hard place right now, and they're understandably frustrated with that. Um, the, I was going to ask and suggest to the planning board tonight is that, um, and I did reach out to the developer and I haven't, I haven't heard back about this, or I did reach out. Uh, what I was gonna ask for the planning board tonight is there is some money left in the escrow account for the peer review. Um, so I was gonna suggest if it's appropriate to have the peer review, evaluate the current status of the road and any required public infrastructure improvements that will need to be, um, completed prior to acceptance of the road as a public road. So that information can be both up to date and then provided to the developer so that they are fully aware of what needs to be done um, in order to finish the road, hopefully. The, um, uh, yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's pretty much what I'm, I'm, I, oh, one of the residents just forwarded me some information today. I didn't realize that. Apparently there is, and I'll verify the number, but something like a 70, something like a $70,000 bond um, that was put in place at some point for this subdivision as well. Um, so those are sort of the outstanding issues that we're dealing with.
So, um, Mike, do we still have, I mean, we can tap into that bond if we have to make necessary, if we have to actually do the work?
Potentially, I'll, I'll probably circle back with, um, town council, discuss these issues as well.
Okay, because I didn't think they, I didn't think there was a bond.
But the purpose, yeah, the purpose of this being on the agenda was obviously just to, to bring the board up to date with the conversations that I've been having and to let you know that it's still an ongoing issue because I believe that the board's been notified of this in the past.
Okay.
A question, uh, Mike through the chair, if I may?
Yep, yep.
Is, is the money better spent for engineering or legal work, legal fees?
Uh, good question, I don't know as of right now. Um, the, I mean,
It's about time.
Legal fees are gonna come out of the town's legal budget, essentially, right? That the escrow fees are, are dedicated and they're supposed to be used for the peer review and engineering services. So, um, I think regardless, I'll have to, I'll have to bend the ear of town council.
Yeah, I would prefer that, I, I would support the recommendation of the town planner to use these for peer review because I'd like to have a roadmap on what needs to be done so that we have conversations with the developer. We can give him a clear, this is what we need, um, you know, rather than just jumping in and looking at legal stuff.
I, I agree, it looks like we have legal funds are covered somewhere else, so.
Yeah, and do we, do we have a list of the things we requested in the past times this has come up for acceptance at town meeting? I mean, is this kind of ground, isn't this one Groundhog Day or is it my imagination?
Sounds like it might be. I haven't, yeah, there's definitely, you know, peer review reports in the file. You know, um, I'll certainly look, I mean, I, I, we already reached out to DGT to just get a sense of where they were at with this project. Um, and so, you know, it was, um, I honestly can't remember if it was my suggestion to them or their suggestion to me as far as getting out there to, to take a look and see what is done. Um, because it might have been, uh, last time they were out there, probably like 2020.
I mean, all that is needed, correct, is to put, is to complete the road, is to, you know, it has the base coat on it and to?
Definitely, the top coat needs to be put on, and I'm told curbing needs to be done as well. Uh, but I don't know if there are other outstanding improvements that need to be done.
This wasn't the one where people were complaining about, um, mulch and stuff coming down into the roadway, was it?
That was Summer Circle, I think that was up the road street, yeah.
Wasn't this one, the truck was parked, wasn't the company truck parked here on the right-hand side of the road for a few years?
No, I think that one was another one.
That was, what's his name, on, on Mendon Road?
Mendon Street, yeah.
Mickey.
Mickey. That was my introduction to the planning board.
Um, and so I, I, I think some, through the chair, some of the neighbors were just in attendance.
Oh, there was just a chat that came in that the truck was located on May, okay, it was located on Mayflower, okay.
So, um, that was, that was all I had for the board on this, is just to give you an update and like, let you know what I was thinking as far as how, how I was planning to proceed.
Okay. So does anyone have any objections to that money being used to go out to? Who would it be, Michael, do you think? Who's, who's, who's on?
DGT was the peer review on this.
Okay, so to send it back out and say this is what needs to be done?
Yeah.
And then you'll talk to develop, the developer and?
I'll hopefully get, get, get in touch with the developer to, to discuss and, and find out what's going on.
Okay, is there anyone on this call, um, that's impacted by this that wants to speak?
Hi, yes, uh, thank you, I appreciate that. And Mike, thank you for your, for your diligence on this. One thing, um, I wanna note is unfortunately, the developer has showed very little motivation or initiation in completing the project. Margaret, I think you offered Groundhog's Day. That's definitely sort of felt like our experience over the past several years, where Dan has made a lot of promises in the last six plus years and has never sort of executed any of the things. Um, we actually are looking at a list of items right now that need to be completed. So it includes a curb, a catch basin, sidewalk, a top coat that you mentioned, street signs. You mentioned some street trees as well, um, in the cul-de-sac, and some looming and seating. So those are the items that need to be completed. So, um, just a worry that I have is that, um, in many ways, Dan does not sort of feel incentivized to complete the project, so I do worry about it in his mind sort of being an abandoned project. So I'm not sure what we do with that, but that's, um, some of the worry that we have on, on our end.
So I, I might, I might have missed this. Who, who has asked for the street acceptance? Has the developer asked for it, is it the residents?
I don't think there's been a, a formal request for street acceptance. It's, it's, it's a matter of, um, it's, um, the, the residents have gone quite a while, it's, it sounds to me, uh, with, without the, the necessary improvements in order to, for there even to be that request, um, to finish the process.
Yeah, and Mike, and Mike offered some of the, the functional implications. So, um, so the developer has an agreement that nothing, so no snow under three inches will be plowed. Unfortunately, when we get, we, you know, we had the ice event that included, you know, about two inches of snow. So the, um, cul-de-sac was sort of unnavigable for, um, the post office to deliver for about a week. Uh, we sort of mentioned the truck was left there for about four years. Um, it's also difficult because it's not a town road. There are many children in the cul-de-sac and they have to walk to the end of the street. And it's, it's a pretty busy road, so it's not, uh, super safe for a town road. Obviously, we'd be able to navigate, um, pick up houses. There's also not a sidewalk, which is tough, and a lot of people, you know, in the area do like to walk, but that's sort of more dangerous without a sidewalk being present.
Uh, through the chair, if I may?
Yes.
There's a, there's only, there's only a few solutions to this. Uh, one is to get him to fix it, he's not going to. The other is if you have a homeowners association, you hire somebody and they do it. And the third way is that you get together as a, a neighborhood and you petition the town to accept it as a town road. And it may not be in the, uh, the same condition that we typically accept it, but the towns accepted roads far less, in far less condition than yours because of the situation. The cost of the repairs and how to get it up to town standards so that you could have buses and mail delivery is, is the question. We gotta know how much that costs, how we could pay for.
How much is left in escrow for this project, I think, that could potentially be used to pay for?
Yeah, the money, yeah, I agree, that, well, that's the money aspect, which you've only got three avenues. Um, get the developer to do it yourself or have the town approve the road through the town meeting.
Well, the, the homeowners might have a contractual claim against the developer depending on what was promised to them.
Yep. But that, but that bond, the $70,000, I think, that can be used towards this, correct?
Yeah.
You know, whether or not that's gonna take them the entire way to get it to 100% of the standards, probably not, but, um, it's, it's something.
Okay. But this is kind of, you know, I mean, what role does the planning board have at this point? Or is it totally up to the homeowners and the homeowners association? I mean, you know, we do hold the bond, so that's something we can do. We can do, you know, we can work with the developer, you know, we can, you know, I don't know if he ever wants to do anything else in Upton again. Um, but, you know, we, you can apply some pressure to him to finish it up because that was, he was supposed to do that. But then if there's litigation and stuff like that, that would be the responsibility of the homeowners?
But what we can also learn from this is how much our bonds should be. So, I mean, if we are, if we are not holding enough in bonds to finish this project, then that indicates that we, we released money too early or we didn't, we didn't take enough in the first place. And so that's something I think we need to.
Or we released all the lots. Uh, in the past, we've, we've held back a few lots to ensure the extra money to defend things. Um, but the, the bottom line, Kathy's question on the planning board is, uh, if the, if the neighborhood puts us up for a, um, town meeting vote, the planning board has to hold a public hearing. And in the past, roads that are substandard, that they've asked the town to vote for, I, I publicly said, I have to vote as a planning board member against this, it doesn't meet town standards. But when we go to the town floor, I'm gonna vote for it, if the town accepts it through the circumstances.
Have, have, have we invited the developer in to talk to us?
Yes.
I haven't yet, I mean, I reached out, but I don't know if you have in the past.
I did twice last year, he didn't come in. I did talk to him a couple of times, he meant well, but he just didn't get there.
Meaning he's done, Tommy? That, is that what you were kind of gathering from your conversation with him?
I followed up with him and where he worked, I believe it was Uxbridge, and he's got a history of doing this. Wherever it was, we weren't the first town that's been treated like this.
So Mike, why, may I make a suggestion that we, um, Mike, you try to reach out to him? Um, that we use the escrow to come up with a shopping list of what needs to be done? And then, um, at the next planning board meeting, um, we look at, or how, how long would it take that peer review to come through?
Uh, probably we're looking ready for the next meeting, um, maybe a meeting after that, for them to get out there and then, you know, inspect and then produce a report. Um, you know, I'll wait to get that and then I'll get that information, I'll seek to this board, and then, uh, from there, initiate conversations with town council and all while trying to get a, a hold of the developer at the same time.
And so maybe in a month, we can continue this conversation? And in the meantime, the homeowners are gonna have to deal with their own snow removal? There's nothing we can?
Either through the developer, yeah, um, unfortunately.
Yep. Well.
I, I would, you know, encourage the homeowners to, to talk to whoever helped them close their, you know, their, their house sales to see if there's any, any, uh, you know, any contractual rights you might have against the developer.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they want to, to say at this point? I mean, I think this is gonna be a process.
I just, I, we, we are very appreciative of you, of you navigating this. We know it's, uh, complex, but we really appreciate your attention on it.
Well, thank you very much. And I'm sorry, I have a long driveway and I know what these ice storms have been. And I do not envy you folks. So, okay. Well, thank you for coming. Um, and do we wanna move to the next item or on the agenda? Okay, um, discussion, 185 Main Street, construction of new commercial building. Um, site plan review triggers determine, okay. So, um, 185 Milford Street is?
That's a, it's a small lot, um, you know, heading towards Oak, uh, Hopeville. I believe the lot is already cleared. This, uh, the, they, they had applied for a building permit to put a retail store on the property. The, so it's an empty lot, it is a pre-existing non-conforming lot per zoning, and we have a determination on that from, uh, that was accepted by the building commissioner. So it's a, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot, it's, it's, or it's, uh, able to be, um, uh, constructed upon, uh, per zoning purposes. Uh, but, so, and they, the building they proposed is, um, under 2,000 square feet. Um, but it is, uh, originally an empty lot, proposed for a, a new use for retail, um, under 2,000 square feet, um, not proposing ten or over parking spaces. My assumption on behalf of this board is that, um, uh, the, the construction of, of new building for a commercial purpose, uh, might require, um, site plan review. So I wanted to get that confirmation from the board tonight, um, proceeding. And then, uh, yeah, we can just start there. Um, you, you should have had the plans, I believe, were disseminated with meeting materials.
Okay.
And on Mike, if I may, Mike through the chair, now this, uh, non-conforming, um, is so they're not changing any lot lines, it's just the existing layout that they're using?
Uh, the existing layout of the, of the lot lines, yes, correct.
Now, doesn't, when the, uh, the use that was used for the non-conforming is gone, doesn't, uh, does, well, how does the, um, the new owner get the non-conforming use transferred over to him? Isn't it a brand-new, uh, thing, whether it's a new business or whether that, it's not the old business that was given the non-conformant, the brand-new app?
There's no use there, is there?
There's no use.
Yes, there is.
But what was it non-conforming for?
For the size of the lot.
And, but it was, so it was, it was cut out as a non-conforming lot because, uh, it was considered non-conforming because of the dimensions?
Um, the non-conformity is because of the size of the lot. This is Sherbale Nation from Capstone Builders, I'm the owner as well. I just wanted to thank you for putting this on the agenda. So if I may shed some light, the, the lot area for that zone is 80,000. This lot is 16,656. Everything else is conforming for the front yard setbacks, all the sides. Everything conforms, even, um, just a little bit short on the frontage, but this lot was created prior to the zoning by laws. It was created by, um, by the shifting of both highways. The old 140 used to, used to be behind the lot, so when that road was shifting. The old one forty used to, used to be behind the lot, so when that road was shifted, this lot was created prior to zoning. That's where the, you know, thank you, Mr. Planner, for clarifying that, that this is a grandfather lot. So the only thing that is not.
Excuse me, sir, what was it? Was, was anything ever built on it?
No, it wasn't.
So it was, it was grandfathered in as a buildable house lot?
No, it's within.
House lot, the, go ahead.
It's within the general business district, uh, Tom.
But what's the eighty thousand? Give me the dimensions again? General business is fifteen.
As of today, is the required minimum lot size is eighty thousand. This is a sixteen thousand.
Eighty thousand is a resident lot size. If you're, if you're in general business, it's fifteen.
Right.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Uh, Michael's, can, can Michael, Michael's trying to say something here. I can't hear you very well, Michael.
Yeah, sorry, um. I, apologies, I don't, I don't, um, have the, the, um, dimensional tables in front of me, but I do, uh, I do believe it, it, it is a non-conforming lot. Area, um, but, but.
What zone?
But it is not. I wanna double check the zone, um.
The plan I have from Mr. Norman Hill in here has said it's commercial, industrial.
Industrial, yeah.
CI?
Yeah.
Then you don't need eighty thousand for a commercial lot.
No, I don't believe there are five thousand either, but let me double check.
But if your, if your, uh, non-conforming lot was for a residence, and this is any commercial lot, I don't see that you have a, um, a grandfather for something that it wasn't intended for. If you're saying it's eighty thousand.
I don't believe this is a residence.
Yeah.
Yeah, he, he's saying that, but it's, uh, he said CI, it's commercial and industrial.
Well, you're confusing me with the eighty thousand number. That's not a commercial industrial.
Yeah.
Minimum.
That's what Mr. Norman Hill put on the plan that he had approved, uh, in August of twenty-two.
I'm still confused. Doesn't matter what he put on there. Well, who put, doesn't matter who put it on, it doesn't matter. So, uh, I've got a conflict. Your grand, if it looks, it looks like you're grandfathered in with a residence, and you're putting in a business, that's not grandfathered.
So, just, just, just a question, Tom, if this is in a commercial industrial area, then it's a conforming lot for a commercial industrial purpose? So.
How do we know that?
So it sounds.
What was the grand, how do we know when it, it was grandfathered for that? I need something in writing that says that's what it was granted.
No, I just, I just, I just thought that what Michael was saying was it had sufficient, that it's sufficient now for a commercial, or I thought you said it, that right now it's, it's sufficient for a commercial industrial use. Because it doesn't, that doesn't require eighty, let's just put the grandfathering aside. It doesn't require eighty thousand square feet. It requires less than that. And if he has sixty thousand, six hundred feet, then he's cool for putting something in a commercial industrial area. Okay, Mike, you, you're?
The eighty thousand square feet, uh, requirement, I believe, is being derived from a note, uh, of the, um, dimensional regulation table, which, uh, states that, uh, within the CNI district, um, it has to comply with whatever the, uh, least restrictive, uh, uh, residential district, uh, that it's adjacent to. So in this case, I believe it, uh, it, maybe it's not, um, oh, it would be the AR district, so it would be the eighty thousand square feet. So, um, per, per that note in the, in the, um, uh, dimensional regulation table. Um, and so because of that, it's a, it's a lot that was created before the, before that note was implemented, before, uh, zoning came into play that controlled for, uh, uh, history, a deed history had been provided to this office, uh, uh, assuring us of, of that, uh, of those vested rights. Um, so that's, that's why, uh, it has been considered a, a pre-existing non-conforming, uh, lot. And then the use comes into play because.
One of the problems Mike could have with a, a non-conforming lot with a conforming building, conforming setbacks, conforming entrance, conforming parking, is that they conflict, uh, to, uh, to be, to, I'd have to know more about everything that this is going to, because you, you still have to comply. If you, if you're in a non-conform, if you're in a grandfathered lot, you don't get any waivers, doesn't automatically grant you waivers on setbacks or anything else. So I think there's more to learn here.
Okay, so this is good. So what, this is a discussion about, you know, he wanted to know whether it triggers. And what you're saying, Tommy, is we don't have the information yet to know if it triggers site plan approval, right?
I believe so. I don't have enough information.
Okay, so what do you want, what needs to be done?
If I may, the, the setbacks for the proposed building are on the plan that we submitted with the building permit, and all the setbacks are conforming.
Parking, well.
And I could, I could read them to you.
I, I think if you, Tommy, I don't know if you looked at the, did you look at the plan that was submitted? Cause.
It's on the left-hand side, on the lower section. I could read them to you if you want. The front yard required minimum.
Larger, I have a larger question. Why was it sent to us? If, if you have all the parking, you have all the access and, and setbacks, why was it, why is it to us again?
That was the question.
Question regarding site plan.
Yeah, I mean. That's my exact question, too.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the question was if he needed to, you know, to come to us. That was his question.
I, I didn't come to the planning board. I just need to make sure that. I've been waiting for a building permit for almost six months. Um, in November, I was told the building permit is being held by the, by the, uh, uh, health department, waiting for a water quality and quantity test, which we provided. And I was expecting to get the approval back in November, and I heard from Grace, uh, last week that I am being put on the agenda for the planning board. So I just wanna make sure, how did I come here? I did not request to come on the planning board. I was, uh, how do I say it? I was invited. I was invited.
You're always welcome.
Okay, thank you very much.
The chair was my, was my request, because I wanted to input regarding the site plan trigger. Again, this is a, a new building going on, a commercial lot. Is, does the, does the board consider that a change of use requiring site plan? Or do you stick to the trick, the, the triggers of, of, of dimension, uh, two thousand square feet or the, the ten spaces or more? Um, my, my question was relative to the interpretation of, of, uh, site plan.
I don't.
There's no current use. It's not a change of use, right? This is a first development.
Yeah, I agree with Margaret.
Like, how do the other, what are the other lots next to it? How big are they? Do you know? Can you tell me roughly?
How big are the other lots that are next to this lot?
Is this gonna be totally, you look totally strange, or is it, uh, gonna somehow blend in with the rest of the road?
I, I couldn't answer that. Um, I mean, it, it, it might blend in from a streetscape point of view, but it's not gonna, but from an aerial point of view, it's, it's, yeah, it's a much smaller lot than, than what it is, uh, surrounded by.
How many square feet?
Sixteen thousand, six hundred.
But the question is, does it need to come to us?
It would if the grandfather clause or previous use meant that, uh, ninth, in nineteen fifty-seven, when they said this could be, could be, that was, put it, put it recorded before nineteen fifty-seven, but in twenty twenty-four, you, you wanna build on it, does it still have to comply? Does it still comply with pre-zoning rules? Or does the planning board have the right to say you need to file a site plan? That's more of a question than, I think, the, the building inspector's viewpoint on it.
But, but the question is, do we even, is, does it even trigger a site plan?
Yeah.
It does if we ever say it does.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it does.
But, but the question is, what are the parameters that would make us say it triggers a site plan?
So, Mike, do you have the site plan, those, the, the three criteria? It's, it's size of the addition, change of use, and, and change, and, and increase in parking, right? But what, what are?
Parking, parking, ten or over, ten spaces or over, requires site plan. And a, an addition of some kind, two thousand square feet or over, that's specifically for commercial use. And then there is a, a third trigger that is, um, the way it's worded is something like, uh, let me, well, let me get, grab the exact language. It's, um, change of use, site plan approval, here we go.
Well, Mike's doing that.
Here it is. Here it is. Construction, exterior alteration or exterior expansion of two thousand square feet or greater in area.
So construction of two thousand, so, so just breaking that down, construction of two thousand square feet or greater?
Yep, expansion of, says, it says expansion of, uh, two thousand square feet or greater. This is, yeah, this is under two thousand square feet, the entire building.
It's twelve hundred square feet, to be exact.
Or change of use within a municipal, institutional, commercial, industrial, or multifamily structure with four or more dwelling units.
Okay.
The thing I was hung up on is the use of the word "structure" there. So.
Yeah. So it seems to have, uh, 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 the, the, the change in use has to be a change in use of a structure. And right now, there is no structure, correct?
Correct.
And new structure will be under two thousand, the construction will be under two thousand feet, and there'll be less than ten parking spaces. So from just a site plan, I don't think, I guess.
No, I don't think so.
Nope, doesn't sound like it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, yeah, that was, that was my basic question. I could see, I could see a scenario where the, uh, there'd be a different interpretation of that. Um, so I, I, I wanted to make sure I, I vetted that with, with this board.
Okay. So I think that, um, you know, I think your work is done here. Um, I thank you for coming, and I think that.
I appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
Yeah, so, okay.
And Grace, thank you so much. Grace, how's that? Thank you so much, Michael. I'll, I'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so the next item on the agenda is one twenty-one Main Street. The conversion of two service bays into, uh, a community, um, and does this trigger, um, site plan determination? Uh, Michael?
Yeah, same question, but different. Have we got, we have Tony on the line here from, uh, Prime, um, to help assist with this. Uh, yeah, again, you, you should have, um, plans, uh, that were submitted, um, that shows, uh, the intent here. Uh, obviously, you have the, the, the Prime Auto Gas Station there with the, the building that's on the site. There are existing car bays, um, on, uh, within that building. Um, it is the intention, uh, to expand within those bays to create a, uh, convenience store of sorts. Uh, Tony, if you, if you, uh, through the chair, if you could elaborate, um, on what the intent is.
I certainly can, and I can also share my screen if it helps explain what's going on.
Yep, that'd be good.
Sure.
Maybe that'll be good.
Yeah, I, I, uh.
Grace, can you put it on? Or, or you're at home?
This is stuff, can you see it?
No, I see you.
Um, I'm hitting the share, but it's not, it's, it's not, it's not grabbing it.
Do I have to allow you to share? I don't think so, not on.
Well, that might be the case.
Yeah. And your name is, um?
Tony on, yeah, something's changing right now.
There it goes, okay. Okay, can you make it bigger?
Okay, one second. Let me see if I can.
I, I'm the one sharing it.
Okay.
Oh, okay, well, that's not, okay, that wasn't what I was gonna show you, because I had the site.
Oh, sorry.
Layout, but, um, but basically, if, uh, if you take a quick look at that, and I don't, I don't know why I can't share. It's not letting me, but, um.
Yeah, I think you have to be invited to share something at the top.
I can talk after that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
There's a button at the top that says "share invite", so I think that Michael would have to allow you to, invite you to share. It's up to all the people that are on the, participants on the call.
Yeah, Michael is sharing now, though, so maybe we should just look at the, it's being shared.
Yeah, I see, it's not, yeah, I had, I, I had modified other stuff, but anyway, I can explain this pretty quick. Basically, we had, um, you're probably all familiar with the Prime Station.
Yeah.
We have this site that's almost two and a half acres, but we really can only use the front portion of it because of the way the, the photography and the ledge outcroppings on that hill behind it. You can see from the contour lines, it gets pretty steep up behind the site.
Yeah.
We have an existing gas station that's under, uh, the interior is under twelve hundred square feet, and we have the two fueling pumps, uh, dispensers under a canopy in front of that. Um, we presently use the, the, uh, right half or third of the building as a, as a mini food mart. If you went in there, you'll see there's a counter, cigarettes, soda, some snacks and stuff like that, that's, that is available. We use the left half where the two bays were previously used for, uh, car repair. Just as a storage shed for our construction crew, that they have tools and equipment in there. So what we're proposing to do is to take that, uh, storage area, have them move that stuff out of there, and then just, uh, expand the, the mart area into that bay area. We don't plan on making any additions to the building. We don't ma, plan on, uh, needing to install any additional parking. We had, I, I think I came in, I don't recall if any of the board members were the same when I came to the board, probably about five years ago, uh, before COVID, and, um, if you look to the right on this plan, you can see some of the area where the Upton Housing Authority has some parking that is actually on prime property. We had come to, uh, we wanted to originally use up all the flat area that we own, in this area, but the housing authority, uh, was opposed and, and had a problem because we were gonna take away their parking and they don't have any place else to put it. So we had worked out a solution with them, and they had threatened to, to, um, to take a, a adverse possession suit against us to take over that portion of area. So we worked out a solution with the housing authority and the state, um, that we would donate some land over to them, that would allow them to build a parking area closer to the residences that would be ADA-approved, and a ramp that's, that goes up to their residences in the back that are at a higher elevation. And then that, and then there would be some remaining area, um, that we would be able to put a building on, at the closest point that they come to the intersection. Unfortunately, what's happened is that the state or the, or the housing authority have not been able to secure the funds. Even though we're donating land, they haven't been able to secure the funds to actually do the construction, build a ramp, so it's been on hold. In the meantime, the state has proceeded with the new curbing and sidewalk along the frontage of both properties. And we recently had a, um, accident at the property where an inebriated, uninsured individual drove into the corner of the building. We put a temporary repair on, and if you look at the building now, and this is some of the stuff, I would have showed you a quick photo, is we had to basically board up the front of the store and close it off. It's been that way for, for a little while, and we'd like to, to make it much more appealing aesthetically by opening that back up and putting glass back in. It would be a temporary repair until we can finally, uh, sec, until the housing authority can secure the funding, and then we'd go back to the board with two applications concurrently, one for the housing authority parking lot addition, one for our site work, and then that could all be worked out. But in the meantime, it's really difficult for us to operate the location as it is. So we're looking to possibly expand the, uh, the store into the, into that, um, storage area, and then redo the fronted of the building to replace the damaged portion that's now boarded up with glass. And then the overhead doors that we have, the garage doors that we have in the other part of the building, we would take them out and we would build, a glass storefront into that also, so it would be much more appealing from the street. We'll clean up the building, paint the building, and then eventually we'd like to also just clean up the fuel dispensers. What we won't be doing, we're not in changing any impervious, we're not changing any required parking. We would be adding an ADA ramp into the building and, and delineate the parking space as an ADA space with a ramp that they can get into the building, which isn't there now. We would, um, hopefully make the building much more presentable and hopefully it won't be too long before we'll be doing a much larger job and building a, a brand new building altogether. In the meantime, we're hoping to, we've got a construction crew that's in between projects and we're hoping to jump in here and do this work while they're they, it's good inside work for the winter. And so we applied to the building department and they said that we probably need to chat with you guys as to whether this would trigger site plan. And we're hoping it's really a minor project that doesn't really change anything on the site. And you guys can say that, uh, we can proceed with our building permit process.
Uh, through the chair, if I may, this is Tom.
Yeah.
On the, the plan I got mailed to me, it showed parking, it didn't show here, I'm just showing, uh, where's the, the two spaces to the left of the building? It don't really show any to the right. Is there another parking plan that you can show here?
There's two spaces to the right and seven spaces on the left.
Yeah.
Now, those seven spaces, those seven spaces are going to cause the, that business to be nonconforming. They wouldn't have any parking spaces, is that correct? If you build that, you'd be right up to their building?
Those are, those are basically existing, they're not, the striping is worn out, but it's already there.
So this is shared parking?
Uh, no, I'm not sure, shared with who?
You're, you're talking about the liquor store, right, Tom?
Yeah, there's a liquor store right, there's a, there's a business right there and, and that's where everybody parks. I mean, I don't drink, but I know everybody parks there and.
We're, we're not, we're not looking to change the parking to the liquor store, but they actually are parking on our land. That's not their parking.
Well, uh, that's a problem because you're gonna make that a, a nonconforming business if you do that. I would be opposed to that. I, I think you need some more work on it.
No, we're not, we're not changing that at all. They can't take credit for parking on our property.
Well, you're saying, you're saying something that bothers me, them take credit. Did you, uh, have you talked with this owner? Have you discussed anything with this owner about what's gonna happen?
We're not changing anything as far as they're concerned. We're gonna allow their customers to park there.
It doesn't show, there's no signs or any site separation that shows that that parking for the normal person just driving down the road that pulls in, is gonna look and see parking next to that building. You're gonna, you're saying that that parking is clearly designated as for the gas station. That's ridiculous.
No, I think what he's doing, no, I, I think what he's doing, Tom, is he's coming to us to see if he needs site plan approval because there's no changes and there are no changes and.
I think there is, there's a usage change.
There, well, no, because it's all parking for his, you know, if I park in my neighbor's driveway, um, and my neighbor lets me walk, park in their driveway, that's cool.
Those, you're telling me those parking spaces are clearly designated in part in front of that, in front of that liquor store for the gas station?
But, Mom, there's no plan to change those, get those parking spaces, so.
If, if, if that business owner has not been contacted and he's told that his parking spaces that he's used for, I don't know how many years, you, you're talking about adverse possession on the one side and you're not talking about adverse possession on the other side?
Tom, I tell, we had, do you remember, we had these discussions at length, like five years ago.
The owner be, the owner before that used that park, those parking spaces. This owner uses those parking spaces, that's 25, 30 years that that parking spaces have been used for that building.
And he's still.
Do you remember, do you remember this, this whole proposal from five years ago? I mean, this is not a new.
It was all on the right, yes, yes, I do, and it was all on the right side, it was never, the left side was never talked about. They, they never said five years ago that there was parking spaces that belonged to the gas station being used currently continuously for 30 years by the building.
I think they did.
Can I clarify something, please?
Yes, yes.
We, we show four parking spaces alongside of the liquor store, but we do not need those parking spaces to meet our zoning requirement. The zoning requirement is one space per 180 square feet of, uh, building and that we don't need those four spaces to meet that requirement. So it, we're basically showing those because we know people park there. We have a good relationship with the owner and we've never had a problem with him ha- having people park there. Now, having said that.
Tommy, Tommy, let him, Tommy, let him finish, please.
Having said that, at the time that we come back with a larger, bigger proposal of some kind and if you look at the plan, and I did have that plan in, in the share screen, but I can't show it to you. We did exactly the same type of thing where we had parking in that area shown that we know will probably be used by people frequent, frequenting the liquor store and we don't have a problem with that. Actually, for us, if someone pulls in there, gets gas, it's kind of a synergy, so it's good for us to keep that. We're not looking to deny parking to the liquor store. At the same time, I don't want to say that we are committing or providing parking to him because I don't know what might happen 10 years from now. That he, that's actually our land and he has no right to park there, except we're allowing to him and we, and we have no problem with that. It's great.
Just a point of clarification, let's point of clarification, Tommy. Um, for what you're looking at today, you wanna know if you need site plan approval to meet, I mean, if, if you need it. And you have enough parking on this map without those four spaces to meet what's required for this site. Is that what you're saying?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yes, and I, I do not agree that parking has been established. I, I say.
We're not talking about those, those spaces that you think that he shouldn't.
I'll, I'll tell you, I'll tell you what, you don't need to tell me what I'm talking about. I'll tell you what I'm talking about. He's listing parking spaces currently that he owns that have not been used for him, for that business for 30 years.
So all is I'm saying, eliminates those, Tom, that's my point. If he eliminates those, because those are irrelevant to what he's talking about today. Because he's got enough on the immediate right and the immediate left of the building. He doesn't need those. They show up on this plan because, because they showed up on this plan because there it is. He doesn't need them. He's not gonna use them for this rendition. And so the question is, if he eliminates those, those parking spaces, if those are not in play, is this going to require site plan approval? And I would say no, because it's a consistent, it's a consistent use.
Someone thought it did, otherwise they wouldn't be here.
How many square feet, how many square feet of retail space will you have if we do this?
Um, approximately, approximately, uh, 800 or less.
Okay.
I can, I can get an exact number for you if you want, but, um.
So that would be five and a half, it would be basically five spaces, right? 800 square feet.
Yes.
Yes, and you have one, two, three, four, you have five.
So, and, and that doesn't count, to be honest with you. Um, eventually, we, we're hoping to maybe make this self-service. People will be part, people who use the store park at the dispensers. They don't necessarily, once they park there, get their gas, they go inside and leave the car there, so that.
Yeah, but that's not relevant to the, I mean, what we're talking about today is whether or not you need site plan approval.
Yes.
And.
I would also argue that you have the right to share the, the parking spaces that are by the liquor store.
Sure, right, and we only show them on this plan because we've originally just submitted a floor plan for a building permit and then we were told we need to see a site plan, so we did a site plan that shows parking and we know that those are being used as parking spaces, so I showed them, but I have no problem taking them off.
Yeah, so I think if we just take those off for the time being and that'll give you the opportunity, you know, before your next rendition is to meet with, you know, talk to the owner, come up with a shared parking agreement, life is good. I think it's better, I think that might help address some of Tommy's concerns. Um, but for the purpose of this one, and I think Mike, Mike was having problems with his headphones and I think he had to get off the call, I wish he was still on it. Um, I think this.
I'm still here.
Oh, okay. Does this, without including those four four parking spaces, does this constitute, um, uh, you know, does this, would, would you recommend, would you? What, what would your recommendation be about whether or not this requires site plan approval?
So we're still talking about the three criteria, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just talking about.
Go ahead, Paul.
No, I was just, I just wanna make sure, because we're talking about, are we adding 2,000 square feet? And the answer's no. Are we adding 10 parking spaces? The answer's no. So I think it comes down, the, the real question is, is it a change of use?
And I would argue no, because it's still a gas station and, you know, he still, you know, it's, it's.
But it's not a convenience store.
W- we do sell, we do sell all convenience store items there now, it's just a.
I, I thought that was just an office. I, I've never seen that open before. It looks like somebody just sits in there.
Okay, well, I, again, this is a picture.
Am I wrong?
From you that I have that shows the counter with the cigarettes for sale and the, and the soda machines and.
All right, all I've ever seen is a closed door and a, and an old counter like it used to be like that, but it doesn't look like it's actually open to anybody.
Is it, you never run out of oil? If, if you, if you needed a quart of oil and there are the old ones that are open, you go there, they are, they have stuff inside.
All right.
Okay, so since it meets all three of those criteria, does he require site plan approval? I would say no. Does he require, does he have to submit a site plan? I don't think so.
Uh, through the chair, I would, I would, I would suggest, um, based on the earlier conversations, um, to me, it doesn't seem like it's, and, and I don't, obviously, I don't make the decision for the board. Um, but ba- based on the earlier discussions, it, it seems like it's heading in the direction of not requiring site plan.
Yeah.
Um, I would say for the purpose of verifying, um, I mean, we can easily verify, head down there and see, uh, if there's any some, a small existing retail within the existing uh, office slash retail space. In that case, it'd be an expansion. Um, so you'd look at the expansion portion of the bylaw and then apply that 2,000 square foot rule. And so it's an expansion of an existing use that isn't, that isn't going over 2,000 square feet.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't think it triggers site plan review.
Uh, yeah, up to, uh, through the chair, or to actually to the chair, yeah, my problem isn't, isn't the place or itself. It's gonna improve hopefully both places. The, like, you're gonna park at the liquor store and go to the one and you're gonna park at the gas station and go to the other, so it's great. My problem is, uh, putting somebody out of business, uh, or, or having some problem down the road where we, we okay the plan, but there's a, the parking was, was not on the plan correctly. So if you take it off, I think there should be shared parking. This looks just like the other side of town where there's a parking space, you're parking it and you go in some places. Shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm thinking that when he comes back, I mean, this is sort of giving him sort of a heads up of what he's gonna have to do when he comes back to do the other, where he's gonna require more parking spaces, that there can be some sort of shared parking agreement at that point. But for this particular use, it doesn't trigger, you know, the need to use those spaces as, you know, that they don't have to be incorporated into this, this, this whole thing. So, uh, you know, I would suggest that we, you know, you will be back before us and this is what you have to look forward to. Um, but that's just sort of my opinion and I, you know, obviously, um, I, Margaret, your thoughts? Paul, Ken?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little more on board with Tom on this one, actually, but it seems like, uh, he doesn't need the review with everything that's there.
Paul?
I, I think that's right. It's a, it's a closer call, but I think it's, I think, I think it's, I think there is a, enough retail there and, and it's not an expansion. And I do, I mean, to the extent that there are gonna be issues, I think it's gonna be border health and building inspector issues that can be picked up, not the issues that, you know, dimensional and egress issues that, that we're more concerned with.
Margaret?
I, I agree with what Paul has just said. I mean, I, I don't think this meets the criteria for a new site plan proposal. I think, you know, Tom has raised important issues with that shared parking that's been there for a long time, but there doesn't seem to be any impact on that shared parking in this proposal, so I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay, and Tom, are you comfortable with making that next step?
Perfect, sounds good to me. That, that's good for Tom, so.
Okay, so Tony, you don't need site plan approval, so you can ignore us this time.
Thank you all so much and I'll, I'll personally say that when we get done renovating the building interior, that parking will still be exactly the way it is and if someone wants to buy gas and then pull over there and get fueled a different way, they, they can still do it, it's not.
Just as long as they don't go through your building afterwards, that's all.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks so much. Have a nice evening.
Thanks.
Um, just, um, I, I'd like to, um, have a request for the board. Um, we have a public meeting, not a public hearing on 169 South Street. Um, do we expect that to be a long conversation or, because I think the public hearing is probably gonna take up some time. Do we have a problem moving that up on the agenda or do we think it's gonna be a long conversation? Mike?
Uh, I, I wasn't expecting it to be a very long conversation. I mean, this is, you, you, uh, basically, um, it, this is my first go around with this board, uh, receiving preliminary subdivision application. Um, uh, but a preliminary subdivision application was filed. Um, uh, that was, uh, sent out for your review. Um, uh, my anticipation for tonight was that the board would, I guess formally acknowledge the, uh, the application as, as being submitted and complete. Um, you know, you, you received the, the application form and the plans and the, uh, the, the necessary fees and the escrow deposit. Um, and so I, I figured it'd be an opportunity to just, uh, address any, uh, questions of, um, of process or clarifying questions regarding the application as submitted before, uh, scheduling um, a follow-up meeting, uh, and then also, uh, confirming the need for peer review services on this. That's, that's what I envisioned based on previous experience with the board. Um, but I don't know typically how you, uh, proceed with, with this sort of item on the, on the first go around.
I guess my question was if this is gonna be, if this is gonna be a five-minute conversation. I don't know if anyone looked at the documents beforehand. I'd like to take it out of order. If it's gonna be a 15, 20-minute conversation, I'd rather just go to the public hearing.
Well, it, it should be brief because we've, we've received the application and our only question is, do we send it out for review? Which we don't have to, uh, we don't have to hold a public hearing, we don't even have to say anything, but it helps them in the definitive, it cuts the definitive down to 100, to 90 days and we're supposed to flush out all of the problems at this stage, so it is an important submission. So I say we table it and talk about it later.
Okay, alrighty. Okay, uh, you later, this meeting or later at another meeting? Later at this meeting?
If we have time.
Okay, okay. I just didn't wanna keep Rick here. Okay, so, um, I am going to, uh, uh, suspend the regular meeting and, um, it is 8:19 and, um, open the public hearing on, um, there's two of them that I'd like to combine into one. Uh, one is the major site plan modification filed by the Town of Upton Recreation Commission, Kowana's parking lot to see if the board will vote to amend site plan approval condition number six. And the second is site plan filed by Mendon Upton Youth Soccer Association for proposed lighting. So, um, do you wanna start off, Mike?
Uh, yeah, I guess, uh, um, so at the last meeting, the board accepted the applications as complete and scheduled the public hearing, so here we are. Um, uh, since last time I'd sent out the, um, the lighting plans that were submitted on behalf of Mendon Upton Soccer, uh, sent that to Stan Tech, they were kind enough to provide a, uh, a, a pro bono, uh, review of the lighting plan. Um, they had, uh, given initial comments, uh, asking for some additional information. Um, I had sent that to the applicant, um, and I believe, uh, I, I believe shortly before the meeting or during the, they sent in some, some, uh, response materials um, for, for that, so I would, I would ask, um, that they, uh, through the, through the chair, if they wanna go, go through the, uh, material that they had prepared for tonight, um, and then, um, uh, just discuss, uh, why, since it's the public hearing, this. uh, just discuss, uh, why, since it's the public hearing, they should probably, um, you know, go through the requests, uh, in detail. Uh, what they're asking for, what they're looking to do. Um, and, uh, and it, the board was, was forwarded and, uh, I apologize, it was sent out today, but you, you have a copy of the, the conversation between uh, myself, the applicant, uh, conveying the, uh, the peer review comments with regard to the lighting. So some of the key takeaways from the lighting, uh, were, they wanted to see, the, they, the peer review wanted to see the impact of lighting, uh, beyond the soccer fields. Uh, to show any potential impact to your neighbor, you know, neighboring lots, things like that. Um, so that was one request. Uh, there was, uh, there were sort of technical questions regarding how the light is, um, calculated as shown, uh, to determine what the, uh, real impact is of the illumination. Um, and, uh, you know, there were suggestions of like attack, providing options for hoods of the lights to help to, to aim directly down. Um, questions for clarifications of lights, uh, whether or not it's, you know, how that, um, the foot candles are being shown, if that's derivative of a particular, uh, uh, you know, angled down of the lights, or if it's more angled perpendicular, you know, those sorts of questions that came out of the, the peer review. Um, and, uh, yeah, that's, that's pretty much, uh, I think where we left it. Uh, like I said, that they had followed up with some initial response to that. And then I believe they just sent in, um, so some additional information regarding, regarding the lighting. So I, I, I pass it off to you, Madam Chair, or the, or the applicant. Oh, and, uh, before, I'm sorry, uh, and then, uh, because we're talking about both of them at the same time. The other one is recreation. We have Maria Chervino on from, uh, Rec, uh, to, to speak to that request. That request is relative to a 2015 site plan approval through this board. Um, there was a condition on that approval that, uh, tied the programming of, of the use of the, the field and, and the, the park itself to what the programming, uh, was described as back in 2015. Um, so the, the request, as I understand it from recreation, is to amend that condition to either reflect current programming. Um, uh, with the potential allowance for, uh, the discussion regarding lighting, because obviously the lighting is, is going, is intent on uh, expanding that programming to, to allow for, uh, and they can speak to this. Uh, but, uh, playing, uh, using the soccer field later into the, the fall, uh, as, you know, obviously we, they tend to lose natural light. And to be able to keep, um, playing until a certain point. Um, so it, it's, uh, the recreation's request is relative to the, the programming, uh, and they hope to, uh, have, have the, this approval reflect either current and propos, uh, current and proposed programming. So I hope I've, uh, given that enough of a overview, um, before we get into the details.
Michael, just a point of question, of clarification before we hear the applicants. Um, basically, the question about lighting is moot if we don't vote to amend the original, um, uh, or, or can do so. So why don't we turn it over?
Well, so, so can I, sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry. I, I don't, I don't believe that to be the case.
Go ahead, Matt.
Um, well.
Well, we're just saying, it's like, it doesn't necessarily matter if, if the parking lot is something that we use. There's certainly parking lot and parking spots available on the lower in the Kiwanis Beach parking. So I, I don't know that it's, it's necessarily contingent upon the approval of usage of that parking lot. So we would still move forward, um, with lighting up our field. We would just park below. We just wouldn't use the parking lot up, up, up top.
Well, why don't we, um, the next, why don't we have, uh, Maria, um, or the, why don't we talk about the, uh, the, the first item first, the major site plan modification? Um, so Maria, are you still on this call?
Yes, I'm here. Hi.
Okay. Can you, like, talk to us about what you're looking for?
Yeah, so, um, just on that point, I do agree with soccer. I think that's one of the reasons we had these two categories, uh, submitted separately was because they are not dependent on each other. Um, the parking lot, we wanted the official documentation to match the usage of the field, um, and the usage has developed since 2015. So really, all, uh, we're looking to do is to have our, uh, use of the parking lot match the approved schedule, which, um, recreation and DPW works together to approve. So when that is approved, that would just then be the usage of the parking lot schedule.
Okay.
Yep.
So you want to go into a little bit about what, about what you're looking for, and then we'll open it up for discussion from the planning board?
Yeah, so the, the, um, parking lot has actually been used primarily in that way for some years now. Um, we, we actually don't do the opening and closing. Typically, police is in charge of opening and closing that gate. And I'm not sure if they were aware of the schedule from the 2015 document, but, uh, basically it has been used to match where they would open the gate, um, for the timing of the, the games on the fields and then close it at the end of the night. Um, the entire park is 8 a.m. to 8 p.m., so they typically match it around there unless they're specific. Uh, we have a concert series on Wednesday nights in the summer, so we have certain things where it's extended, but those are, um, approved, you know, in other ways. But typically, when it comes to anything to do with the field, it's eight to eight. And that's how it's been used. So like I said, we just really want to make sure that the documentation is matching the use correctly. Um, and we don't want to make the same mistake we did back in 2015 of backing ourselves in the corner by putting the exact schedule that we have today in order to accommodate any potential future changes, um, in the, you know, as we develop more programming. Uh, but right now, we're not looking to extend programming on the field later than we currently do. We're just looking to match the schedule of the parking lot to be the use for fall and spring, to have them the same as each other.
Okay. Um, any comments from members of the planning board?
Yeah, I think, uh, the, I believe the 2015 thing we put in was for the neighborhood, uh, to, that any major change in activities there, uh, the neighborhood would have a public hearing to go to, and listen, just like this. Any major change. Uh, but, uh, the, the planning board's role in this, I believe, is limited pretty substantially. It's access, it's parking, it's utilities and, and, and use. So, um, I guess my question on the parking, uh, that if you're going to have parking down and the activity is up, um, do we have our sign-offs from the state and the federal ADA, AAB? For what we're doing? Do we have full, um, permission to do all the stuff we're doing already? So, so handicapped access, do we have that? And is that okay, uh, now? And is it gonna be okay then? Is one question. The other question, next question is, would be access, uh, that, I think, whatever that road is, do the police, have the police weigh in on on if that's a, a safe access road to an increased activity? The activity is gonna be increasing at the worst time of driving. Uh, do we have?
The activity is not increasing.
Actually, can, can, can I, can I just go, can I just go back a step, Tom?
You're increasing the time. Excuse me, go ahead, Captain.
Um, okay. Maria is talking about, my screen is getting really funky here. Um, Maria's talking about revising the, um, 2000 and I think it's 16 agreement. I think that's when it was finalized. Um, and then we talk about the soccer lighting. So why don't we take these in sequence? Um, and, you know, so what you're doing, Maria, is you're looking to, um, increase the, you know, to change the agreement for the lot so that it reflects the real uses of the site, not the schedule. Okay.
Right. So Kathy, so kind of to piggyback off what Tom said was the, the limits that we put on the usage of the lot in that agreement were based on what we were hearing from the neighborhood at the time, the concerns of the neighbors at the time.
Yes.
And so I think the, the first piece of that is are those concerns of the neighbors?
That's right.
Are they here and, and, and do those concerns con- continue? The second piece that Tom pointed out was that there was a good deal of consternation at the time and lots of hearings, et cetera, over, um, access.
Yeah.
And if we're separating these two and saying, it's okay, we can light the field, but people can park down below. He's concerned, and I understand that, that if we do that, we will actually fall afoul of accessibility laws that we worked on then. So although, yes, I understand why they, they say these can be separated, they cannot, unless, unless we can be assured that we're not fa- falling afoul of the accessibility laws, they, they can't actually be entirely separated.
Well, that's why I wanted to separate them, because I think Jeb and youth soccer, we're talking about using the lower field.
Well, there is, there is handicap parking from the lower lot, though. It, up the ramp.
Okay.
That, that handicap parking in the lower lot does not allow grandma to watch.
No, it does.
A game in the upper lot.
It does. It does. It goes all the way up the hill.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you, if you drive, if you drive up, um, there is handicap parking that is accessed from entering at the lower parking lot, driving up the hill, and then handicapped spacing.
Certainly, I've just because my brain is getting fuzzy. We're talking about access through Cider Mill, or through, okay. And then we're talking about access through, um, the big street. Um.
Yes.
We're good.
So when you talk about the upper lot, you're talking about the one going from Cider Mill Lane? Okay. And the lower one goes directly from, the lower lots are accessible directly from, what is the name of that street again?
Kiwanis Beach.
Okay, Kiwanis Beach Road, yeah. So, so what, um, so what you're, so I do know that there's accessibility, quasi-accessibility, because I think there's still issues about, which was a question I had for you, is, you know, how we stand with, you know, the a handicapped accessibility plan that I think was developed, was part of the 2016 agreement, um, to make those fields fully accessible. Um, and where we stand on that. Um, but I didn't see how people could access the upper fields through Kiwanis Beach Road. Um, that seemed, um, actually Lynn Hagerty has her hand up. Can I, because Lynn sort of bird dogs this stuff. So can I have Lynn speak to the handicapped accessibility a lot, because that seems to be where a lot of concerns are coming in?
Um, Catherine, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, hi, Lynn Hagerty. Um, I'm an accessibility's advocate, so, um, the issue is, is that, there was a transition plan done in 2017. And on page four, it clearly indicated that an accessible route should be made from the accessible parking to the bleachers. That makes the field accessible. That has not been done. And as you're changing, changing all of this, the whole reason that the handicap parking is where it's located is not to marry with the lower level. The lower level has handicap parking. The parking up on the service road that unites Cider Mill Lane is designated for that additional parking lot. So that's where your, your ADA aspects come in. So this has been triggered. It's been on the radar for quite a while. I've spoken to the building commissioner. I've spoken to the, uh, Center for Living and Working, which I tried to send the board a document that didn't go through this evening, because I received it quite late. But under 521 CMR, the building codes, section 20, an accessible route should be provided. And there's other elements of it that we could go into, that what other triggers that are even more coming to play with this. But hopefully, I've answered that question. Any, do you, have I answered your question, Catherine?
By accessible route being provided, do you mean to the bleachers, um, or do you?
Accessible route, so if, um, Michael should have it, probably have it up, Mike Antinorellis. Um, an accessible route to the bleachers, it's to all the facilities. So in, in actuality, when you go to light up that area, you're calling for an accessible ru- routes all around, all around the fields, okay? And you're also calling out, the way the lighting design appears to me, that calls for accessible route um, to the tennis courts, which are also used, you know, for the pickleball tournaments, that driveway, that parking lot. Um, it's also gonna illuminate the basketball courts, which I don't know how you'd make an accessible route.
It, it, oh. It won't light that, it won't light up any of those, because if you look at the analysis from the engineering plot that we provided, it gets down to below one lumens per foot. One lumens per foot is barely, barely a, like, um, if, if you have your lights off at night, that's something to light your, your steps up the stairs type thing. Um, we provided an analysis that shows everything gets below one foot per, one lumen per foot past the field. So if you want to go even further, we can get down to the point zero zero. Um, right there, if you, any, any, any of those plots, every single one of those little dots is actually a measurement of how far this light will go. It won't go past the field more than 10 feet.
And you have to remember, these poles that we're suggesting putting in there are only 30 feet tall.
I, I know.
Not even close to the tree line.
I know how tall they are. I know how tall they are, and I appreciate what you're telling me. Um, I was an electrical contractor, so I understand what you're telling me. I'm telling, I'm just mentioning that it will, you're gonna illuminate the, um, your proposal is to illuminate the walkway as well, or the, the ramp, okay?
No, we're, 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 we're actually gonna find potentially the walkway if we can't use the upper lock, the upper wa- uh, parking lot. We're, we're actually not like that at all and just use the lower parking lot.
If you're gonna shut down that top, top lot, then, then there's really no use, there's no use to even park there, so why would we illuminate that? So we would just continue to use the lower lot. And we would still use the field as, as we have always used.
And, and there are three. Yeah, there, we're gonna be directed down to the walkway and the parking lot that we would use.
Uh, through, through the chair, if I may, won't this actually be, uh, a better, if you take the, our reviewing engineers' comments and, and do some shielding or, or different angles, wouldn't you make this even, uh, better, even more illumination on the field and less in the outside areas? Unless, unless the engineer takes everything that you've submitted as, as okay. But if, if you take any of the engineers' comments, wouldn't you be making this even better and less, less illuminated for those wrong areas? Is this the final plan?
That is the final.
Can, can I just, can I ask a question? Um, you know, again, I, I'm challenged a little bit by, by, you know, looking at, you know, we're looking at neighbors' concerns about lighting. We're looking at handicapped accessibility. We're looking at, I, I think, a, a group of volunteers trying to do, um, you know, make a program available for Upton kids. We're looking for, so this is, this is really complicated. And I, I, I just, I think my two priorities in doing this are making sure that, uh, there's several priorities, making sure the neighbors are okay with it, making sure whatever we do is ADA compliant. And then making it happen, rather than, you know, looking at going back. And, and I understand what you're saying, Tommy, but you know, you can always make something better. But I know that, you know, these folks have been trying to move this forward for a couple of years. I mean, not for a couple of years, but I think since last, last year.
Pretty close.
And, you know, and, and so I, I'd like to address, you know, again, Lynn's concerns, um, because I think, you know, they're pretty critical, because, you know, we, we have to be ADA compliant. And then.
Is the, is the field ADA compliant today? Is that what we're saying? It's not? Is, is that the case?
Um, sorry.
Wait, 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 quick, real quick question.
Yeah.
So what part is not ADA compliant?
Through the chair, can I answer that question?
Yes, you can.
Okay, let me try this again. Okay, let me try this again. All right, so, um, all right, so Mike has the document up, and if you go, I believe it's section four, that Mike Kennedy, he's the official, the center for living and working, the advocate that did the transition plan. You know, he, he's a state official. What is not compliant is there has to be an accessible route from the handicap parking right to the bleachers, the bleachers.
There is. There, there is right now.
There is not an area, it's grass. I live here. There is not an accessible route from the handicap parking on the field, on the field, an accessible route to the bleachers, there is not.
It's supposed to be gravel, correct, Lynn?
It's supposed to be, it should be, um, like a gravel service that's, that's acceptable. It could be like the, uh, Maria will know, you know, there's a walkway, um, just like there was that had to be done from the parking lot below to reach the pavilion and the fireplace.
Yeah, so, okay.
Sorry, I just want to ask, so would, would a mobi mat running from where the walkway, where the, where the handicap parking spots are, walkway, mobi mat to the bleachers, would that solve this problem?
Um, I can't, I don't believe so. Um, I believe that would be, um, a temporary seasonal type of fix. You'd have to, I really suggest that you reach out to planning, reach out to Mike Kennedy. I will have a document from him. I did try and send something to, um, to the board. It's right there, though, that you need an, a, an accessible route. It's a temporary fix.
Could we do a temporary fix and a schedule to make sure, you know, and just say, okay, to lay out some steps, just so we can make this happen? I mean, Lynn, would that?
No. Uh, can I finish answering the question? The chair first?
Yeah.
So, to the chair, to answer your question. I don't have knowledge that a mobi mat would be, um, would be acceptable in this case. The mobi bat mat was acceptable, um, as a temporary fix across the grass into the water. It became a temporary fix to a short distance to the, um, tent that they needed additional for the camp. So I, I really, and I've, I've reached out to the Mass Office of, um, Architectural Access Board, and it was never suggested to use a temporary mobi mat for this type of application. All the fields, even the softball field, needs to have an accessible route, and there's a paved area around the, the softball field that you can get right onto the field. You should be able to get right to the bleachers. I, I just want to say that I, I truly appreciate what the soccer league is trying to do as far as donating, but we, we need, Upton needs to come, we need to come ADA compliant and let everyone be able to attend these events.
Can I talk down?
Yeah, can I turn it over to Matt real quick, Lynn? Yeah, Matt?
Yeah, I'm done.
Yep, absolutely. If, uh, if I were to buy a set of bleachers and put it right there by the ADA compliant area, would that be okay? Then it would be bleachers right there.
Or Matt, we just build, we just build a walkway. We're going to dig the, we'll put the lights anywhere and dig the field up.
I, I will do whatever it takes to get it compliant. Right now, we're trying to donate 70, 80, $2,000 into getting this thing, so kids can actually play at a decent hour, rather than parents having to get out of work, bring their kids at three to five. We're not extending any use of anything. We're just trying to bring it up so that we can use it a little bit later.
Can I make a suggestion, um, that Lynn and you guys sit down? And, I mean, I think this sounds very reasonable, um, but
years, settle it today.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I, I just don't know if.
I know, I know other neighbors are in support of this now, too, as well, on cider mill lane, but others that I've talked to.
Well, that's the next thing we'll do after this. We talked about this, is I'll see if there's any neighbors on the.
Isn't that what the point of soliciting the neighbors was for, to bring them to this meeting?
Yeah, so I'll ask if there's anyone on here that wants to comment. So, um, so Lynn, would that work for you? If they actually made the, I mean, it seems to solve a lot of issues, because it brings the whole field into ADA compliance. Do you think that would work?
I, I haven't seen a, a, a single report yet that said it's not in ADA compliance, because if you get to a flat field, I've seen many flat fields where wheelchairs and ADA recipients, my father's ADA recipient, right, my father-in-law's an ADA recipient and goes to every single game I've ever been to. And he makes it just fine, has had no problem with it whatsoever. And if we need to improve a field whatsoever, I'm, I'm, I'm all for it. But if it's in compliance, because I haven't seen anyone say that it's not in compliance, because we have two handicap spots right there, and you can get all the way to every, he's been able to get to every bleacher, no, to, no problem whatsoever. So if, if this is just a, a, a thing.
I think it's a grass versus gravel.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah. And I don't know what type of field, you know. But Lynn, you want to?
And I'm all for, and I'm all for bringing it, and I'm sure every one of my board members right now is okay with it. We will bring it up to whatever it needs to, to get to it. We want to put these lights in. But if it's not about ADA, and it's about the parking lot, let's, let's separate the upper parking lot, and we'll go, go from there.
Through the chair, Catherine, can I? Okay. In your request for me to meet with the soccer group, yes, I am an advocate, however, the planning board, I'm, I, needs to reach out, and I, I have reached out to your building commi- commissioner, who is the compliance officer in this town. And it, in this site plan, the original site plan in 2015 was about a row, an access road and handicap parking. It wasn't about the soccer field. Therefore, it's my suggestion to the board that the board reaches out, I'll have other information to you. You need to make the soccer field compliant before you start adding lighting. The bleachers need to be ADA compliant as well. It's, it's awesome that they want to donate this. And then, if I can switch hats and speak as a neighbor, I just want to say that the gates are never closed, as the conditions. There's pickleball going on, you're adding more activ- if you agree to remove all the restrictions that have been put on this, i- it's asking for more events in a very small parking lot. There's only 30 spaces in that lot, as it is. The poor soccer people half the time have to park on the grass to change over from the field, because there's not enough parking spaces. Then you add pickleball, you add special events, which, which weren't ever supposed to happen. And I'm wonderful that they have happened and benefited the town, but all this has to configure in together. That's all I need to say. And reach out to the state.
I just have, I just have one question really quickly, because I don't think almost any of our fields are in compliance with, with these ADA regulations, so should we just not allow any of our kids to play sports in town and shut down all the fields until they're all in compliance?
Is this a question directed to me, through the chair? Is this directed to me, or you?
No, I don't think that's a good, that should not be going to Lynn. I think that the answer, this, the simple answer is when we update, we try to bring things into compliance as much as we can. We're looking to update, and so we're looking at compliance issues.
Yeah. And the question I think is, and I, I'd like to turn it back to members of the planning board, which is how we usually do it. But I think the issue that we're dealing with is that we do have a offer on the table to do things maybe a little bit, Matt, hold on, I just want to turn it back over to the planning board, because I would like to, you know, get this moving. We have an offer on the table, basically, to say, okay, if we need to do ADA compliance to make this move ahead, then we'll do ADA compliance to move this ahead. Let me see, Matt, first, let me see if anybody from the planning board has any questions at this point, and then I'll get back to, to other folks. Tom, Paul, do you have anything you want to add?
Well, you want to go first, or?
No, I mean, I, 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 I have the same questions. Um, you know, I, I agree with the summary that you just gave, that or that Margaret just gave, that as we cha- you know, update things, we, we look to bring them into compliance as much as we can. You know, unfortunately, the town got burned on, on parts of this, uh, this area. We, we relied on an outside consultant to say that things that were being done were ADA compliant, and they weren't. And, you know, it cost the town a lot of money, so I, I, I don't want to, I, I don't want to hold up anything unnecessarily, but it sounds like the, the, the sides, and I, I don't want to put you on opposite sides. But I think the, the sports folks and the ADA compliance folks sound like they are willing to keep conversing about what it, what it takes to get this thing in compliance enough to, to, to move the, you know, move, move the project forward. Uh, that sounds good to me. If we can get people to have, you know, ha- have an agreement, and, you know, Upton is not in ADA compliance on a lot of things. I don't think anybody has ever suggested that we shut everything down until we're 100% in compliance. There's been, you know, cooperation throughout the years to try and bring things up a- as best we can with the event, with the resources that we have. So hopefully, that spirit of cooperation continues.
So, Tom?
Well, well, one of the things for us is, uh, in the past, we've always gone to our own, um, uh, senior director, ADA director. We had one in town, we haven't had one recently. So from a planning board perspective, all we need is the experts to tell us it's okay, and that's the highway to tell us the road's okay, the, uh, ADA and the AAB, both state and federal, okay, as we can get fined by either one. Uh, but as long as we have some documentation from the AAB and the ADA, we should be good with the handicap, because they're the ones that are going to find us, and they're the ones that set the rules. The last step is, is the neighborhood, and they're affected, I think, most by the lights. And, uh, one thing that bothers me is the engineering report seems to be disregarded. I, I, maybe I missed that, that you answered the engineer's concerns. Um, but if the engineer's concerns are met, that would help even more alleviate the, the neighborhood's concerns about, uh, of the light. So those three things, the neighborhood, which is the utilities, the access, and the parking, uh, all I'm really concerned about. We get those, and I think it's, it's good to go.
Okay. So, um, and I know that, you know, again, uh, it gets to be process can be frustrating. And I understand, um, that there's a lot of frustration, and I know from Lynn's side, there's just been a lot of frustration. I think sometimes, you know, you feel like you're, you're, you know, pushing against the tide. But it seems that, you know, in the conversations that were had, and this is with the handicapped accessibility, that the, uh, youth soccer league is willing to work to make it handicapped accessible. Again, that's just one part of it. And I think that one of the issues that, you know, was sort of raised is the process for making it. You know, and, and that's very frustrating, because it takes time. So one of the things that Lynn did suggest is, you know, reaching out to the state and saying, hey, what do we have to do? And then if you're willing to do it, then you do it. And I know that's an extra step, but that might be another way to, to make this happen, rather than having sit-down meetings here. Because again, the town doesn't want to be in the position of getting sued. And so
The problem, excuse me, we don't have the resources in town to answer their questions. We should have somebody on staff that can answer all these questions for them, so that the recreation committee doesn't have to be bu- uh, burdened with, with the handicap access. Another department, we don't have that, so I think they're burdened with it.
Yeah. And so, and I think it's the people from the state that are the folks that, and I think, you know, Lynn has the contacts with them. And again, I know it's frustrating, because you guys just want to do it. And, you know, and I respect that, because I'm the same type of person. And so, and then we're dealing with, with, with the whole thing about the lighting. And, you know, um, I didn't have a chance to real, you know, I, I sort of scanned through the, the communications, because the back and forth, you know, the email chain. So I will defer to Tom on, you know, the, the differences, because if it is just a minor thing, then, you know, it's just as easy to, to do it. So I guess we still have some hands up. I mean, those are my thoughts. You know, I would, my preference is to come up with solutions that, you know, can be met in a timely manner and can be somewhat efficient. So, Matt, I'm gonna recognize you first, Ox, you had your hand up first.
Thank you. Um, I think we have a few different issues here. We have an ADA compliance issue, we have a lighting issue, and we have my couple of issues after that. And like the upper, I was the lower parking lot. I am all for bringing things into ADA compliance. Do we have a report yet? And this is a quick question, yes, no, do we have a report yet that says something is not in compliance?
I thought, I thought that there was. Lynn, is there a report?
Well, even if, even if we don't, excuse me, even if we don't, the burden is on you to prove that you do. We don't have to, uh, it's, it's up to you to prove to us that you have access, that you have utilities, that you have ADA and AAB approval before we find the pipeline.
Thank you. Thank, thank you very much. So, so as, as, as I understand it today, we have, uh, two handicap parking spots right there at the, at the field level. We have two more at the upper level with the walkway that goes down in a gradual slope. In which case, we are all willing to put lighting up for any type of thing that goes on whatever it need be. The fact of the matter is, we're trying to put lights in to extend for two hours. I think probably the most that it's going to be ever used, it's for the end of the fall season. It's not used for spring season, it's not used for the fall, it's not used for beginning of fall, it's not used for the summer. Because the, the sun is just up too much. At the end of the fall season, we're, we're fighting it for families to be able to get there. We're not overusing it. It's just, it's a simple thing. If Lynn does not want us to use the upper parking lot, fine. We're not, we're okay not lighting up the upper parking lot, we don't need to use it at all. But as, as I stand to, as I understand today, the field is ADA compliant with the two handicap parking spot, except for the ramp coming down. We don't care about the ramp coming down, we don't care about the upper parking lot, we don't need to use it at all.
I think it's
I want to
Us to the field. I think there was also the access to the field to get to the bleachers.
Isn't, isn't putting, because it sounds like there's a problem with the gate being closed. Wouldn't having lights make it easier for the police to come in and, and look at the property and make sure that this, wouldn't it be better with lights?
It would be.
It would also benefit the, the concerts that are happening out every Wednesday night in the summer, but there's no lights there today, and nobody's complaining about that.
And that would, what would, what would you do to? Do they have to, or control over the gate would be another thing. Um, if it's, it shouldn't, it can't be opened, uh, later after everything's closed, so is there a way to, uh, transfer the responsibility of the gate closed to whoever holding the event? Last one out locks the gate.
I, I don't think the police have a timeline of they can close the gate. That's the way it's been. It's just because, I mean, they, they never close it.
Yeah, we, yeah, I think what he's saying is, could we have the gate be closed when we leave? Like, I, I don't know why not.
If they want to, if DPW wants to give us, or the, the police want to give us that responsibility, then we, we will take that. That's easy.
We will shut it, we will open it for the times we were there, and absolutely take care of it.
That would help, wouldn't it?
Through the chair, Catherine, can I just?
Yeah.
Okay, so the issue with the gate, it isn't the issue with the gate, or even it being opened all the time. The point of the matter was to protect not only the neighborhood, why it had lesser hours and didn't have as much traffic, is to protect everybody going back and forth. So I'm not opposed to the soccer group in general at all, or the gates, you know, yes, it would be safer at the gates, or open and closed after, after events. That's not the point of the matter with the issue with extending more hours onto the field with more events. You add more events, you add more traffic. Therefore, you have a small field, you have a a road in town that is only 18 feet wide, which should be 26 feet wide, with lines of sight that Mass DOT even recommended the usage of the field based on the hours of soccer. Now it's going to be used for even more events. Alls I would ask as a neighbor is that somehow recreation, somebody. Not, not to blame anybody, anything like that. Coordinate the events so that, you know, if there is a giant event, say this is a cornhole tournament, which is wonderful. Don't play in a soccer game that gay. So everything's overflowing and there's so much traffic. That's the issue with, with everything on the, um. With the gates opening and closing. It's not an open, an issue with the gates opening and closing. It's the amount of traffic you put in the neighborhood in the, in the peak hours. This is a cut through. And you're also adding events. I, I'm not opposed to the soccer, soccer people having. To be able to use that area. Then if I turn my hat around and I'm an ADA person. Or a mobility's advocate, it comes to the point that. You're looking to amend a site plan, okay, that was basically for. The site plan is, is just what it says it was. It was for to bring. In a gravel parking lot and access to the field. So therefore what comes into play is the ramp down to it that had to be corrected. As Mr. Carey called out because it was built wrong. And then you get to the lower level, the two parking spaces, those handicaps parking spaces were built specifically. To make the gravel lot compliant. Those are the only parking spaces that make that gravel parking lot. Compliant. And then.
I, I, I think, like, I think we've all got a pretty good understanding to kind of go circle back to what Tommy said. We haven't yet heard from the rest of the neighborhood. So the gate opening and closing was set. When we did this originally based on complaints of the neighborhood. We haven't heard from the neighborhood. That's about the question of the gates opening and closing. We also need to hear from the neighborhood about lights. We also need to understand. The ADA compliance issue. There's, there's three questions in my mind. Is the neighborhood concerned about the extended hours based from, from what we, what we were worried about in twenty sixteen? Is the neighborhood concerned about the lights? And are we still going to be in ADA compliance? Do we have to do anything to meet the ADA regulations? Those are our three questions. I think we all know what those three questions are. At this point, I think Kathy, the time is to ask for the neighbors.
Yes.
To tell us about what they think about the extended hours and the lights. And then for us to get evidence that we're in ADA compliance.
Yes.
And at a future meeting.
Okay. Are there any residents or are there any butters, any neighbors on this call? There are no neighbors on this call.
I mean, I could get one. I could get one in support if you want, but.
Yeah, this is, this is a public hearing. So, uh, you know, I think at the end of this, you know, I, we don't have to render a decision, but. You know, and I don't, I, you know, but I, I, this is the time for neighbors to comment. So I would assume, um, actually let me, let's just go through this a little bit. I know, but most Lynn and. I, Matt have their hands up, but, um, so. No neighbors are talking about, um, traffic. I do believe the police chief, didn't the, Mike, didn't the police chief send something in today?
Yeah, um, he, yeah, apologies. He actually said that a lot earlier, but I, I didn't, I neglected to send that along until recently. Let me just pull those, uh. Comments up. They, they, they weren't comments of substance. Um, he pulled, um. You know, tra- uh, accident reports and, and things like that. And he didn't find any within the like the last two years.
There had been no complaints, no citizens complaints, right?
No, I don't believe so. Let me, I want to grab his comments real quick, but I know I'm looking.
I have, um, I have his statistics that he sent over, pulled up if you, if I can share.
Okay.
Sure.
So, um, correct. He said that there was no significant increase in traffic, um, crashes or violations. Since the changes, um, and he showed, you know, it through, through data. And then verbally, when we spoke again, he said there hasn't been any significant issues for them. And I know one of the issues that was brought up was emergency vehicles being able to get to the field. And he did state that, uh, having access to the upper lot has just been beneficial to get to the field. Versus trying to go up the, the windy road, um, to, to the handicap spots in that, that area. It's not better for them to access it that way than through the upper parking lot.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm reading it, his email to me. That's exactly what it says. Yep.
Yeah. And, and also in his letter, didn't he say that there hadn't been complaints from neighbors?
Correct.
Yes, I, I thought that was codified in, in a letter. So that would answer one of the questions. The traffic has not been. An issue with neighbors to the best of, the fact that there's nobody at this public hearing. And the fact that the police chief said that he's got no complaints. So the other, um, issue is the lights. And, you know, the, the impact of the lights on the neighbors. Again, there is nobody at this. Hearing, um, to say that they're bothered by it. You know, there is an engineer report, um, that suggests some changes. Make some suggestions, um, if they don't seem to be huge. Is that a problem?
And, uh, through the chair, um, it appears, you know, they, they, um, the applicant had sent in. Uh, revised lighting plans, which were on the screen earlier. It appears that, um, you know, the, a lot of, a lot of the. Questions that were raised by the peer review, I, I think were addressed within, uh, that plan that was presented to the board. And as, as the, uh, there was earlier discussion regarding the, um, foot candles and the lumens, uh. Around, um, you know, the, the initial plan just showed the foot candles within the footprint of the soccer field. And then the updated plan showed it, um, as a, I think it was a hundred, a hundred fifty feet, uh, around the field. Um, or something to, to that extent, but showing a good, a good distance around the, the, the soccer field itself. To show the diminishing of light, uh, as was requested by the, the peer review engineer. And then, uh, one other thing, there was a question about. You know, uh, an official response or, or accounting of. Architectural access board regulations and ADA compliance. Lynn did send along just prior to the meeting and I, I forwarded that to the board, uh, maybe like an hour ago. As I just received it, uh, there was a, it was an email from Mike Kennedy. Who she, uh, Lynn mentioned, who, who, who works for the, um, center for, what is it Lynn? Center for Living, Center for Living, I remember.
Center for Living and Working. He's the state's ADA advocate in our area, ADA.
Yeah, he, he sent along an email, um, uh, mentioning, uh, some terms of access that Lynn had mentioned. And there was an attachment to that. The attachment Lynn, uh, through the chair, um, the attachment that was, uh, within that email. Is that just a, um, a copy of what is within the, uh, transition plan? Or is that a new, a new assessment of ADA compliance?
It's a copy of what's in the transition plan that calls out that the, um, accessible routes. You'll see it, it. If you look on page four, like Mike, that Michael indicated. It calls out accessible routes to all the access up there that should be made. And I can get a letter from.
Okay.
From Mike Kennedy.
Suggest through the chair that the board use that as reference and guidance as far as official, um, determination regarding. The compliance, uh, if that's your question.
Is that for the upper lot or for the field itself?
I think it's for the whole. Yeah, the whole complex.
Because, yeah, I mean, ju- just a thought, this, and I know this, a lot of people have their hands up, so I'm just gonna keep going here for a minute. This proposal before us for the lighting of a field has to do with a field. And I for one am uncomfortable having the youth soccer. Take responsibility for all the ADA compliance issues, um, that have built up over time. I think that we have a willingness on behalf of youth soccer. To address the ones that have to do with the lighting of, it's a single field, correct?
Yes.
Yes, of a single field. And, um, you know, I think this is, you know, healthy for us to get another look at what's going on, but. You know, it, it, you know, again, as far as the handicapped accessibility issue goes. I think if they move forward and make that field handicapped accessible, I would be very comfortable. You know, with, with the lighting. That doesn't address the issue about extending the hours of the. You know, upper or changing the nineteen, uh, the two thousand sixteen agreement. But, um, but anyways, let me just go through people, um, see if there's someone who hasn't spoken yet. Actually Maria, do you have any, you had your hand up. You, you have any comments on what we've just discussed?
It, it's sort of related to what you just discussed, but I just want to confirm what was in the chat, was put in the chat is that. We're not looking to extend the hours. We're just looking to match the hours. Um, and that's both on recreation and youth soccer's requests and recreations, uh, approvals.
Okay, okay. But it's changing it from the two thousand sixteen agreement though, correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Um, Matt, you wanted to talk?
Yes, uh, well, based on all the things that have, that come out, I'm in agreement with what Maria just said. We're not looking to extend anything. We're not looking to make more hours for the field. I know DPW had, had a concern with that, with that before. We're just looking to put in lights. Allow us to do the same thing to make it a little easier on parents because three o'clock practices aren't good for every parent. It, it, I, I'd like to request that we look at the three issues separately. And approve or deny each of those separately, the upper parking lot, the, 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 the ADA and the lights. My only request.
Well, I think we have two items in front of us. So I think that, you know, the two we can look at separately, which, you know, they're two public hearings anyway. So are folks ready to move forward with this to look at the first request about, um, amending the two thousand and sixteen? Or, you know, um, what was the exact language? Again, my brain is getting fuzzy. Yeah, amend the site plan approval condition number six. Are folks comfortable?
Through the chair, we haven't got any of the documentation we would need. We haven't got documentation from the, uh, from any of the groups. We haven't, uh, no, we haven't got enough information.
What, 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 what groups are you?
Well, first of all, we need documentation. We need something from the ADA and the ABA saying that we're not going to get fined as a town. Doing what we're doing. This is a brand new site plan. We go through it all again. We need all of the okays from the beginning. So we need the, the police saying that they can monitor the road just like they do with the school buses that go down. The, the town watches that road and they, and they monitor the traffic. So they can do the same thing if there's a large event.
So the police are okay with this, Tom. So the, I feel like we don't need to bring the.
The police didn't address my questions. The police had, that, that was a very big and unhelpful letter from the police chief. It doesn't tell us at all that they can monitor heavy traffic, uh, downside in the lane, not just at the intersection. It's very nice at the intersection, but. Are they going to be able to, like, they make it go one way at certain hours of the day with the buses. That has nothing to do with the intersection. That has to do with control over the roadway.
Bullet points of exactly what you want, what you think is.
I want, I want the same things I've always asked for, safe access, safe utilities and safe parking. Safe parking means that we have an AAB and an ADA agreement in writing that this is okay. It's simple.
What is, what is the first one? AAB, architectural access?
We need the state, we need the state and the federal access. Okay, that this is okay. We're not going to get fined in writing. We need something from the police chief saying that they can monitor and, and have safe access if there's a large event. And we need to know that the utilities are going to be not detrimental to the neighborhood. They're not going to devalue the neighborhood. And that's, and that's a, an, an examination of, of the lighting and to make sure that it's okay. So it's three simple things, but we need them in writing.
Okay. And as far as the latter one goes, um, as Mike said, the lighting. The lighting issue with the soccer field has been incorporated, you know, the issues raised by the peer review. Most of them have been incorporated into the final plan.
Um, that's great. I haven't had a chance to look at it. I really haven't had a chance to study that.
Okay. Because what I'm getting at is, um, you know, is it possible and what would the. Thoughts of the planning board be about, um, approving this under, with conditions?
I, we don't have enough to, to do that yet, do we? Isn't there still information to be received?
I'm just looking at the three that you just gave.
So I guess when I, when I think about what the, the issue you just raised with the police, Tom. The police are saying there is not a problem with the current situation. And the proposal is actually to legalize the current situation, right? We're hearing from, from, uh, MYSA that they're not going to change anything. But the reality is they're changing from what was approved to what they're currently doing, right? But the police are saying with what they're currently doing, it's not a problem. So I actually don't have a problem with what the police responded with, with the response of the police. I think there's an issue. We need a letter from the Architectural Access Board. But I don't think we need something else from the police. That, that's just my interpretation of what we heard from the police.
Okay with the police part of it too. I, I, I get Tom's concerns and on the AAB issue. I mean, we did have Ms. Haggerty, you know, kind of offering to continue to, to talk with folks and. You know, and she, she suggested, you know. That, that there's a state person out there that, that can be of, of some help. But, you know, I think it might be in, in the town's best interest to, you know, to have the, uh, the rec folks. Talk a little bit more with Lynn because again, she, you know, the, the history hasn't been. That the town has crossed every T or dotted every I, uh, but we've tried in good faith to, to make things. Better where we can. And, and I think that's what Ms. Haggerty was, you know, was asking for. You know, for us to make sure that happened this, this time, not necessarily, you know, getting a, a, a sign off from the AAB and. And, and other state actors, but maybe I, maybe I took that wrong. I just thought that there was a. Sort of an interim step there that might have been easier to, to reach.
And one, one thing, uh, I, I will, if there's, if there's anything I can do, I, I have time. If there's anything I can do to help enact, there's a go between, uh, the, the board or the chair would like me to do that, I would volunteer. Because it's a great idea. It just has to be done right.
So, um. Is the will of this board then to continue to the next, to continue this? Public hearing until the next meeting or what, what does, what do folks want to do?
With the respect to what?
The whole, the whole shebang.
What I would, what I would recommend is that we close the public hearing and then not vote on it until the information's been received.
Yeah, just in answer to your question, Matt, I understand that you think that, that, that we should treat these as three separate issues. But in reality, when you're upgrading a facility, that's when you have to meet, that's when you have to meet the current ADA compliance issues often. So even though you're just putting in new plumbing, if the building isn't ADA compliant. And you're putting in the new plumbing, you have to upgrade the building to ADA compliance. So, so that's why these issues are triggered. Even though you're not changing what you're currently doing.
We just make that the only issue then going forward? It seems like there's not a neighbor issue anymore. The light's not an issue anymore. It's just the ADA compliance.
One more issue, can the town of Upton handle every single cost going forward? Because we've handled every single cause going in the past. Were they amenable to that?
Well, I don't understand what you mean. And that wouldn't be our purview anyway. That would be the, the board of selectmen would have to weigh in on that.
No, we've do engineering analyses, we've, which the men in Upton Youth Soccer Association has taken on because. Someone said they needed something else and then someone said they needed something else. Now again, we're going on two years for doing this.
But we're not talking about that. We're talking about getting, I think the only outstanding thing is a letter from, um. You know, the Architectural Access Board and, you know, showing. you know, the Architectural Access Board and, you know, showing it's ADA compliant. So I don't think.
Can we put that in the, you know, only thing left to do?
Unfortunately, if I may, uh, as we discussed earlier, there, there used to be a town board that you could go to for this information. And you don't have that, that, that available to you, so for sure, you should go to the selectmen and because they don't have a division or a department doing that, the selectmen should apply you with the finances to complete the ADA requirements and the A B requirements, you shouldn't have to pay for that.
But if they volunteer to pay for the, the stuff right on the field?
We, we, we volunteered to do the ADA upgrades. Can we handle them as separate things and put the lights in and then talk to everybody about how the ADA stuff gets applied?
Didn't work the last time.
Matt, can I just ask you a question? The lights you're talking about are in season. So we're talking about you want to have them up by next fall, correct?
It's going to be done in the spring though, for the grass though, in the summer. Cause we're going to tear the whole field up, so it needs to, the, the sprinkler system gets, is going to get damaged, the, the lawn needs to grow grass again. So we really need to do it in the spring, so it can, it's ready to go for the, for the fall.
When, when at the latest?
Our season starts in April.
So we won't, I don't know if we'll be able to do it before then now, at this point, but.
Yeah, no, we, we, we need, we need it before the fall.
Like ideally, we can do it by June, right?
Let, yeah, let's say it has, in by June, so that things can grow and things can be properly set.
Okay. So.
But, but now you're going to need to back off from that, June, um, May, April, we need to start in March, March to February, uh, March timeframe.
And let me ask a question to both Lynn and Tommy, um, because Tommy offered to, you know, really sort of help facilitate this. How long do you think it would, I mean, I have not, I just got the document Lynn sent during this meeting and I haven't had a chance to look at it all. When it comes to, um, moving this forward, is this something that we can do quickly? Seeing that there's one outstanding issue. Through the chair.
It, the faster we move, the more we're going to screw something up. My, my only point is that, um, this, this needs to be done so that we're not going to get appealed. I mean, we, this, if we're satisfied that, that everything's been done to our rules, we can, we can suffer an appeal, but we, I don't want to make a mistake by going too fast.
Okay, but no, but, but Mike, um, I mean, I think what Lynn's suggestion was is to reach out to Mike Kennedy, I think his first name was Mike, um, and, you know, get a read from him about what exactly was needed. And that just seemed like a, a good step, and then he might just say, you know, this, this is what you need, and that will tell you exactly what you need. And, you know, um, we can send.
The increment board is about three months. So if, if we, if, if we, if we now delay for another meeting or whatever it is, it's another three months before we have something.
A meeting isn't two, a next meeting would be two weeks, yeah.
If, if we can say that this happens tomorrow, that this person reaches out tomorrow and then goes forward so that we have an answer the day after tomorrow, fine, I'm, I'm, great, but we've been doing it for two years.
No, I, I understand that, process is off.
If I may, it, it's not that difficult, we have a compliance officer. Um, we ask, first we do, you say you're in compliance, fine, let's ask the compliance officer, are you in compliance? Yes, we move forward, no, he tells you, you fix it. So compliance is going to be done through some, not me, but it's going to be someone telling me that you're in or out. It's either going to be our compliance officer, it's going to be the state, but somebody has to tell us that you're in compliance. It's that simple, I mean, we have a compliance officer, you can ask him and put it in writing to us from him.
I thought you said make it, okay.
If, if it makes it easier and we are in compliance, we have one, he can tell us, that's Pat Roach.
Oh, Pat Roach is the compliance officer, okay.
Unless it's changed, that's, I mean, I, I'm old and I forget things, but I think he's a compliance officer.
I think Tom's right, and we, you know, if we have a letter from Pat Roach saying in his opinion we are currently in compliance and will remain in compliance, then the planning board is protected, but the, and, and as long as Pat is correct, the town is protected.
Exactly.
So Pat Roach, uh, no, I'm sorry, he, I'm sure, we've been dealing with him for a while now. He's the one who put us onto this and he's said okay for the longest time, I believe.
Good, then we just. Let's get it running then.
He, he, he's the one who told us to, to do this, to get over here.
Okay.
We've met, we've met with Pat.
And he told you, he, he told you the right thing, you have to have a, you have to have a permit from us. We have to, we have to dot all of our I's and cross all of our T's.
We're following the process, but now you're telling us to go back to Pat.
No, we need a letter from Pat saying you're compliant.
We need a letter, okay.
So we have a letter from the police saying they're okay, this is what we do, we, we get letters from experts to tell us that we are okay.
So Margaret and Catherine, please reach out to Pat Roach and see what he says and you talk to him and say, is it okay?
And we need a letter saying that it's ADA compliant.
Through the chair, Catherine?
Yep.
I spoke to Pat Roach this afternoon, he gave me permission to speak, to let the board know that it is not in compliance, that there needs to be an accessible route. So if that clears up that question, yes, she'll need something from Pat.
Wait, wait, and what he's talking about is the ramp going down, because we don't, we want to disassociate with the ramp then.
No, you're, um, Matt, I'm sorry, it doesn't have to do with the ramp. You're, you're standing, um, let me try and explain this, you're standing on the, um, you're at the gates to the soccer field. You need to have a route from there on the grass, all the way to the bleachers, that's what it is. Hasn't, the ramp is now in compliance.
Right, so if they do that, which they volunteered to do at the beginning, then they say, they can go to Pat tomorrow, say, Pat, we're doing this with this bring us in compliance. And then they do it, and then we can approve it.
Right, and that, that'll consist of a site plan showing how you're making an accessible route. And Pat will give you all that information, Mike Kennedy will give you that information as well.
Yes, Matt, you had your hand up again?
So if I put a bleacher right there, I will submit a tomorrow that shows a bleacher with a two-foot walkway to the bleacher at the end of the field, will that be good enough for this board?
So you have to remember what we said is Pat Roach is the compliance officer, if Pat Roach says that's good enough, that's good enough. If Pat Roach says you need the walkway, that's good enough. We don't have, that, that, our, our job is to review the comments of consulting engineers and experts in various fields. Pat Roach is our compliance officer, if he says that's good enough, great, do it.
So bring that to Pat and tell Pat to write a letter saying it's good enough.
And when can we have the meeting? Two days from now?
It's two weeks.
Two weeks. And do we have to have like a three-month advance notice type thing?
Yeah, usually four months.
Thank you.
No, I think this is our first time seeing you, so I'm not sure why you're mad at us, but.
No, I'm not, I'm mad.
I'm, I'm, I'm about done with, with this, and we can vote no on everything tonight, in my opinion, or you can listen to what's been told to you, take that under consideration, go get what we told you to get and come on back, and we'll get you on our next meeting.
Paul, I understand and I absolutely will. I'm sorry if I'm frustrated, because I'm frustrated for myself as well, I'm sorry. Completely apologize if I, if I, if I came off that way completely. We're trying to get this done for all different reasons, but good reasons.
Well, and I, I agree with you, this is.
And we understand that.
Yeah, one, one thing I hope you, you realize is that, that I'm asking, that I, my motion is to close the public hearing and so that you're true with that, no more public hearings. And the next step for you is just to give us the documentation that we've asked for.
Absolutely, we'll get it, we'll get it for you ASAP.
And, and just clarification with the rest of the board, the only thing we need is that letter from Pat Roach. Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so can we close this public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, let me poll members, uh, Paul?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
Margaret?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
And me, it's unanimous and the public meeting is closed. So, um, just get that information as quickly as you can from set up a meeting with Pat, get that information. And so we can get it on the agenda for the next meeting, the next agenda has to be posted by, um.
Kathy, we have to continue this, it's a public hearing, it has to be continued to date and time certain right now.
We closed it.
I, we closed it.
Oh, we just closed it, that's right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 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 no, that's, that, that, that's why we can.
We can put it on the agenda for the next meeting and if they're not ready, they, we can, can, we can push it over, but we can, we can have a.
Yeah, okay, okay. And when is the next meeting?
Fourth Tuesday. The twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh.
Okay, alrighty, so it's the twenty-seventh, so I'll probably see you guys on the twenty-seventh. Okay, and, oh, just a question, public hearing, there were two public hearings that we opened together, two public hearings that we closed together. Should we, um, also close the public hearing on, or did we, Paul?
You opened both of them at the same time, I would just, you know, uh, Grace, if you could just, uh, um, or, or, who's, who's doing the minutes? Paul, um, well, it, it means whatever the board does, but you took them at the same time and then you made a vote on them, so.
Okay.
It's up to you.
Oh, I forgot I was taking minutes on this one, sorry, it's been so long.
I think Grace has always, uh, got, got you backed up, so.
Thank you, Grace, I always have to listen to the video again.
And I don't think you wanted to listen to this one again, okay. Okay, so we're going to move to the last thing on the agenda, I think, which is the public meeting on one sixty-nine South Street, if Mr. Morel is still on the call. Yes, you're still here, you're muted?
Hi, yes, I'm here, hello.
Hi, um, so, um, Mike, do you want to start and just give a quick overview? And then we'll turn it over to you, and I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I kind of already did, although it feels like it was a long time ago. Um, this, this, uh, preliminary subdivision, uh, preliminary residential subdivision plan submitted. Um, so it's on for a public meeting tonight. Um, the board, you received copies of the plans, um, copies of the application, uh, staff received, um, the fees that were paid and verified, um, as well as a, a check for deposit for escrow for peer review engineer. Um, so again, uh, I don't know how the, the board typically handles this initial, uh, meeting, once receiving the application, uh, whether or not you formally accept the application or take it as an opportunity to ask clarifying questions or confirm the need for, uh, peer review, so I'll, I'll leave it to the board to, to discuss.
I, I think we generally accept it and, uh, discuss whether it's going out to peer review and, and for who and schedule it for a meeting that, you know, is likely to allow the peer review, uh, and the board time to, uh, look at the project. Um, I, I know we've, we've previewed this before, so I'm not looking to drag anything out, but I think that's generally what we've done.
Uh, the best reason to use the preliminary is to send it out to peer review, give it back to the applicant so that he knows what to come in with the definitive, um, is, that's pretty much what we do with it. Is try to minimize, minimize the impact on the, of the subdivision on, on both the town and the applicant.
So in this case, uh, there's also the solar proposal. Do we want that?
This is, this is just for.
This is just for the whole? The solar things are in the folder, so I wanted to make sure we were, yeah, separate.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think, um, Rick had sent, uh, a more recent, um, iteration of the proposed solar, but that is, that, that's not a part of this, um, subdivision application, correct, Rick?
Correct.
Um, and, uh, do you still have, um, yeah, so, uh, I believe Sean Malone through the chair is, uh, Rick's engineer, he is also on the call. Just.
If he's still awake.
Hey, public process is fun, you know?
Sure is.
Okay, is, is he still on the call?
I think he is, he's muted.
Want to wake him up?
Typically, if I may, here, typically, one of the things is, uh, on the preliminary, one of the things that it gets flushed out is what you need to submit in the definitive, whether it's, it could be an environmental impact, it could be a traffic study, not with a small one like that, but those type things that we would require in the, um, we could ask for all kinds of things in the definitive. And it's nice to know in the preliminary what you're probably going to expect for, uh, extra studies and whatnot in the, um, definitive process.
Yeah, and there will be certainly wetlands, uh, impacts here on the, in the, in the definitive as well, so that we'll be, we'll be hearing from CONCOM on this one as well, so.
Yes, um, Sean says that he needs to be turned on, I don't know if that's, uh, something you need to do. Almost Valentine's Day.
I'm not even going to comment on that one.
It is Massachusetts.
Yeah, I know Ken had trouble getting audio today, um, can he just call in? And, and keep his, you know, turn off, leave the video on his computer?
I'll check with him.
I was only having trouble because I was trying to access through my browser and I didn't have Teams, so I was quickly downloading Teams.
Oh, okay.
I've got a Mac.
I mean, I, I think, I, I'm not sure how much Sean, we, we need Sean, I, I, you know, I think if, if we have the peer review comments, it's, it's not, it, it's not a big involved one, I don't think, um.
Please get Kiwanis off this picture.
I'm not sure who sent that to these days.
Sorry, if you have any questions tonight, I, I can likely answer them, but, um, he's probably calling you.
So it's basically four, four units of housing, um.
Yeah, four units of housing and then we have the back lot, so we have a fifty-foot wide access point off of that cul-de-sac road that leads to the, the.
So that access road is between two of the lots there?
Correct.
Yeah, but, but it comes in off of, it's the access road that comes in off of South Street, just past your house, Rick?
Yep.
And it's a cul-de-sac, yep.
What's the access road construction going to be like, if, from the cul-de-sac in between the two houses? What's, what's that going to be made of, is this gravel, is it?
Yeah, I imagine, I imagine we'll do gravel, it doesn't need to be, you know, impervious surface. Um, we still need to define some of that and, and also that, like the crossing down at the stream. Um, if we're getting, if we need to reconstruct that, so we need to, you know, like you mentioned, peer review, talk to fire and, you know, see what kind of access they need. Um, so yeah, some of that.
Yeah.
Needs to be defined.
Yeah, and CONCOM has got to be critical to this one too, because of the crossing.
And the, the access back to the solar field is going to come off of your, off of your cul-de-sac road.
Correct.
Oh. So basically, the cul-de-sac will end up having something to go into the, okay.
Yeah, there's a, there's a driveway between the first and the second lots on the left-hand side.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's in green.
Cul-de-sac, okay, south, yeah, okay, yep, yep.
And, uh, through the chair, in, in our, our regulations, I believe, we require a fifty-foot, uh, right-of-way from the end of the cul-de-sac into undeveloped property, so it, that would, they'd already have the access, I would think, to that.
Yeah, it's not coming from the end of the cul-de-sac, it's coming off the side of the cul-de-sac.
Yep.
But whether you wanted to put apple trees or, uh, uh, solar farm, whatever you wanted to put back there, we, you have the access, I would believe.
And, and are those lots, those two lots with the access road, are they going to be compliant if you don't? I mean, I, I, I take it, no, neither of those houses is going to own the access road, right? That's not part of either of those lots?
Correct, they are not.
So that's going to be retained land, it's going to be part of the backland?
Yep.
And that's going to be owned by the backland owner as a, or just an easement?
But owned by the backland.
Okay.
So they'd be responsible? So they'd be responsible for maintenance and everything else?
Yes. Okay, that's why you've kept it in green, which, uh, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Correct. Anything under the magic number? What is it, 269?
Would you say where is 269?
Anything under the floodplain? Are you in the floodplain at all?
269 is that red line.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. So the, the impacts for you, uh, for us are probably gonna just be dimensionally making sure that your ankles and, and all your access is correct. And, but the biggest impact looks like it's gonna be environmental.
And also public safety, because, and the, and the plowing, because I do know that a river crossing, didn't that lead to a lot of issues at East Street Estates? Being able to make sure there's a place to put the snow.
They had that really long, uh, area where it was gonna be tough to offload snow for a while.
Okay, and this is a fairly short little jump, okay.
Those are the, hopefully, the engineering things that are flushed out in the peer review.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Who, who are we using? I, 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 I forget who Schofield is now. Anyone remember?
I know, who's ever next, we alternate.
DGT.
DGT.
Are they up next? Who, who do we use last?
Well, I think Stan Tech just talked to us.
Last?
Yeah, so DGT then.
You were using DGT on, uh, East Street Estates. Is that the, is that the very last?
They may be good for it. They're familiar with the type of, uh, design, so they may be a good one for this one.
Right, and I think Stan Tech got the big Upton Ridge.
Are there any retaining walls in this? Do you have any retaining walls?
No, well, you know, site plan hasn't been really hung in and developed yet, but we don't need retaining walls. Uh, we may, we may put something in if we do a walkout basement or something, uh, but right now, it's, it's a little early to say that.
Yeah, the crossing, the crossing, Tommy, is gonna be nothing like East Street Estates. It's, it's pretty much gonna be at grade. There's a, there's already a culvert there, it's not a.
Yeah.
You know, it may have to be, the culvert may need to be rebuilt, but it's not like East Street with the big retaining walls and safety issues.
Sorry about, um, Sean, I don't, he says he's on via phone. I don't know what that is.
I don't know if you guys can hear me, but I, I am, I, I, I hear you.
Yes, we can.
We can hear you, Sean.
We can hear you.
For some, for, for some reason, I have my little FM up there and it, it, there's nothing to click on to turn on microphone or anything like that. I don't know.
Well, Rick did a great job. You should hire him.
But yeah, no, I, and, and so I'm here, if you wanna talk about any of those details, I think Rick has kinda summed up everything, uh, and, and answered your questions correctly, uh, to date here. And I think as Tom pointed out, you know, uh, I think we, we, it's really getting down into the, the, the engineering of it. We know we're gonna have some, um, permitting with conservation through this. Um, but as far as the planning board, I, I, I think it's pretty, pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I mean, as we said, your police, fire, you know, get Dennis Westgate's input into it to make sure he can get his stuff up there and, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And these are all wells and septic, right? Looks.
Correct.
Indications.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So. Yeah, I mean, I think it looks pretty good.
Yeah, and get your list of waivers ready, whatever waivers you want, uh, looking for, get those ready. You'll want a waiver for town water and sewer, uh, things of that kind, just probably, uh, some draft sizes, some, some drawing sizes that you, you probably don't need. Uh, if you look at, if you look at the exact, uh, application, there may be a few things that, uh, uh, we asked for that are from the 1960s that you don't wanna do.
Yes, in, in our, uh, in our submission cover letter, we do identify two waivers that we're requesting from the start here. One is, uh, the need for sidewalks for, uh, a subdivision like this, um, you're required, uh, to have a sidewalk on one side of the road because the, the lots are above a certain size. We're asking for waiver from that. We, we have four residential lots, very rural area. Um, and we'd really like to try to minimize the amount of disturbance and, uh, impervious area. There's no sidewalks in South Street to lead to, so um, we're asking for consideration of waiving the, the need of sidewalks here. Um, the second one is, um, there's some provision in your rules and regs about, uh, dedicated open space. Um, and again, for some of those same reasons that I just talked about, and we have a lot of wetlands around the front of the site and um, the solar in the back, we'd be asking for consideration of waiving any required open space.
All right, on sidewalks, uh, somebody when, uh, they get to a teenage, they might need a sidewalk for kids and so I'm not so sure that neighbor going to the next, even though it's a small subdivision.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah.
I would ask you to consider, uh, sidewalks at some point, maybe not the entire space, but, uh, at least from house to house.
Okay.
We, we've generally waived the two sides of the street sidewalk and, and, and had one. Um, so you're half, you know, you're halfway there if we, if we stay consistent, but um, it'd be something we'd, we'd have to look at. One, one of the things Tom's always gonna ask is what's, what's the benefit to the town, right? So you, you know, with sidewalks, you talk about impervious, that's one thing, but then, you know, the, the open space, what's the benefit to the town? Or what are you doing to, to, to outweigh the, the detriment to the town of us not requiring some sort of open space in, in this subdivision? So I, and, and I haven't looked at your submission, you might have that in there already. I, I'm just telling you what, the question that's likely to be asked.
And another question that's likely to be asked, and I haven't looked at your submission either, is whether you either have sprinklers or a cistern. So usually the, the town is gonna want either a cistern, although there's water right there, so maybe not, but a lot of times the fire wants either a cistern or the houses to be sprinkled, so.
Y- yes, and, and at this point on our plans, we are showing a, um, a cistern in the cul-de-sac, but, um, we understand that there's further conversations with the fire department to be had about that and proper sizing and all that.
Yeah, the other thing I thought, before I forget on our sidewalks, one of the problems we have is, uh, subdivision wasn't finished and, uh, people have to pick up the bus at the end of the street. And, uh, that'd be tough for these four houses, uh, uh, walking. It'd be nice if they had a sidewalk to walk down to the street. I don't, you know, I'm just, you should consider that, consider the sidewalk as not just a, you might have to do something in, in my opinion.
Just a question, how long is, is that, is that, is the road to the end of the cul-de-sac?
We, we have 750 feet, so we're, we're asking to be able to max it out.
Okay. And how big is the entire site? What is the acreage of the entire site?
Uh, 86.5, right, Rick?
Yeah, you asking about the residential?
Yeah, just the residential, not the.
Oh, just, just, uh, residential portion? I'm sorry. Um, what do we, about, uh, 15 or so, I think?
Yeah, yeah, 15 or 16.
15 to 20, something like that.
One, one thing if I may add on the, um, you would, you would ask for a waiver on the, uh, open space, uh, 10% open space. Uh, working with conservation as to some way, sometimes they'll have a trail, we'll put in trails that can access it as opposed to setting aside just a park or a playground with subdivision when they get two acres of land. So, uh, conservation may give you some good ideas on why it's good for the planning board to waive that requirement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a question.
And they might, oh.
Just on the top of the map, where does this land go? What's on, if you just follow it off the map, what's? Okay, so it's residential, okay. Never mind.
Yeah, so, but, but, but what I was gonna say is Concom might, might ask about just a hypothetical, I don't know if they would say this, but a trail over to Goss Pond from here. I mean, you know, you, there is that pretty cool piece of open space that, that, that's unusual, and so right now it's accessed hypothetically speaking by illegal transit through Rick's property. It used to be through Sonny's property and Sonny always said, just walk down there. Um, but, you know, it is actually a really interesting place, Goss Pond is, so, so they might ask for something like that.
Yep, and, and that's something we can explore further with them.
And no need for turtle tunnels. I believe in Goss, Goss Pond, we required three turtle tunnels.
Hopefully we don't need that.
And this is to the actual pond, but it's far enough from it that there's no turtles. They're, they're gonna be burying, they're gonna be burrowing under the, uh, solar panels.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Alright. Yeah?
So we all, we all done with, with this part?
I'm good. I'm gonna eat dinner.
I was gonna say, I have the, I haven't eaten dinner tonight, so, um.
My husband brought me dinner here, which I ate with all your meetings, so.
Yeah. Um, there's just a question, Matt, Matt, you're still, are you still on this call?
Yeah, I'm still here, I'm just listening.
Oh, I thought there was something about environmental impact report. Um, I was like, what? Oh, yeah, Matt, guess, do we have an environmental survey done at 9:52?
Oh, it will, it will actually, Matt, it, that is, again, part of what we have to do is the Conservation Commission will review this. There's a wetland crossing here, there's a lot of wetlands in the area. There are turtles in the sand pit, which are close, so yes, a- among the reports that we will look at will be reports on environmental impact of this proposal.
Yes, and as far as your other comment goes, don't get snarky here. Um, it's privately, it's a private proj, you know, so it does, it's not subject to ADA requirements. So I think you're just being sarcastic, but anyways, um, okay, so we all? We all done with this?
So I guess just the, uh, the question is, I, I guess, um, what I heard is we're gonna send it out to peer review to DGT?
Yeah.
And then we wanna kick this out, what, a month or so?
Mike, how, how long do you think DGT will take?
Well, I, I'll, I'll, I'll have to ask them, uh, how, uh, yeah, so, um, uh, in the meantime, um, we could probably just, uh, put this either on the next agenda or the one after, um, just to continue it to a, to a date. Um, and it's not a formal public hearing, um, but, um, a- and then we all have an update from DGT, um, at that point. And so they'll, they'll either have done a, their review, right, or they'll have an estimate, uh, as to when they'll have completed it.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think they're gonna be done in two weeks. I would suggest the, the, um, second Tuesday in March.
I, I guess my only question to that, um, is, does the board need to take action before DGT can get going?
No, there's no action.
No.
We, we send, send it to them and agree to pay for it.
Yeah.
One of the, one of the great things, one of the great things about being on the planning board is, uh, if you look at the law, when we get the review back from the, from the peer review, we don't even have to tell you what it is.
You don't? Oh. But that would be, but we will.
Yeah.
I usually, I usually share all the invoices with the applicants.
I, I, I think that being the case, I, I, I think I would agree with Paul's, uh, recommendation of kicking it out a, a month, uh, what is that, uh, first in, first meeting in March?
Yeah, it's the second Tuesday in March, I think.
12.
12, yeah.
And, and of course, if, if we get the review back, uh, from the, the peer review back early, we can provide that to you, uh, to be prepared for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Perfect, that'd be great.
So, okay. Well, this sounds good. Um, anything else on the agenda? Nothing I can see. There is?
Well, thank, thank you guys for your time.
Page of it.
Oh, I only.
Have a good night, go eat dinner.
Yes.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, thank you.
Um.
I do have a request?
Yeah, can I, can we just answer, um, Matt's request, yeah?
So the video was recorded tonight. How do I go about properly requesting the, the video recording?
Uh, just talk to Michael or Grace?
Yeah, Greg it all gets just put on, on the town's YouTube channel. Um, so I, I don't know what the lag time is, but for it to get uploaded, but it will be.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was like a, like a formal thing or something like that. That's why I waited. That's, that's the only reason why I really waited for the end of the.
Oh. Okay.
I thought maybe you were thinking about joining us, Matt. You thought this looks really fun.
Yeah, it's election year, you know?
I, I, I really might be, seriously.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll give you the opportunity, because I, 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 it has leaked out. I am not running for reelection in May.
Oh, you can't do that.
It will be a solid 25 years, so I think that's, that's enough. So I got a couple other things that'll take up my time, so Matt, I, 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 I might have seemed grumpy tonight, but it's been a good 25-year run. I would highly recommend you to consider running for the planning board.
And he's always grumpy.
Team, I, like, I, I know tempers get flared and I'm, I apologize for earlier and I'm just like, we're trying to do something good for the town and it just, e- every step of the way seems like it's been blocked and I apologize for, for earlier.
No, I talked to them at the Rose Garden last year and you guys were frustrated then, so I, I understand it, but we need to move on with the agenda. And if you run for planning board, you'll understand the process and you'll be frustrated, you know, you're supposed to be frustrated by it, but.
Hundred percent, that's why, why I stayed on and I wanted to listen.
Okay, okay. So what is next on the agenda, Michael, seeing I only?
It was, I mean, it's, it's almost 10 o'clock, so I, I don't, I don't expect, uh, a robust conversation or really any action on this, so what I'm gonna, i- i- it was the review of the bids that were submitted for the MBTA communities. Um, which is gonna take some thought. Um, so I would, i- if the, if the board is amenable, um, you know, we, we got some good proposals. Um, at least two of them are, are really solid, in my opinion. Um, would it be okay to the board to, I work with the chair, um, to identify who the preferred consultant be?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Sounds good.
And in the meantime, if, if you've had a chance to look at the bids, or if you can, between sometime tomorrow by the end of the week, if you have any questions that you'd want me to ask, um, of any of the consultants before we lock in something, uh, please send that to me and I'll, I'll be sure to, to try and get that information before we, uh, move forward with our selection.
Okay. Okay, and everyone should keep, is that the last thing on the agenda?
I think so.
Okay, everyone should look to see what Milton does tomorrow with their vote on the MBTA community. Um, so, um, I, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Margaret?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Tommy? Tommy?
He's turned.
Hi.
Catherine? Hi, okay, bye everyone.